I will call this Temecula Planning Commission meeting of May 15, 2024 to order. And we will begin with the flag salute. And Commissioner Turley- Trayle.
Please stand and join me to honor our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll have a roll call next.
Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
Vice Chair Turley Trayle.
Here.
And Chair Hegel.
Here.
All present.
Welcome, everybody. We do not have any public comments tonight until later, so.
That is correct.
I will skip the long reading, so that doesn't bore you. We do have a consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission at items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called and ordered received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to planningcommission@temecula.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. And we have the minutes. And do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the item.
Okay, motion approved by Commissioner Ruiz. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Watts. And all in favor?
Aye.
It's five zero.
Actually, I will abstain. I wasn't here for that meeting.
Okay, you didn't.
Thank you.
So it's four zero one. So we have on our business calendar here, we have, I'll read the paragraph I have to read. Members of the public may address the commission on business items that appear on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called and ordered received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time of the item to be called. For the public comments, submit it to planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution 2021-54. Item number two is the general plan consistency review of the proposed draft fiscal years 2025 through 2029 capital improvement program budget sheets. Long range project number LR24-0141. And Katie, you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, chairperson and commissioners. Today, I'm going to be presenting the capital improvement program, general plan consistency review for fiscal years 2025 to 2029. Just a little background, section 65402 and 65403 of state planning and zoning law requires that the planning commission review and provide comments to the city council regarding conformity of the capital improvement program with the adopted general plan. Planning commission's role is to review the draft capital improvement program and determine if the projects are consistent with the city's general plan. So there are five project categories totaling 110 projects for this five-year period. The five categories include circulation, infrastructure, parks and recreation, housing, and projects funded by community facilities district bonds. The total project projected cost of these projects is about $927 million. There are 26 circulation projects proposed that include interchange improvements, traffic safety enhancements, as well as maintenance and rehabilitation work. These are just a few examples of circulation projects that are included in the proposed CIP. There is a full list of the projects in the staff report. The staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the circulation, growth management, public facilities, air quality, and community design elements of the adopted general plan. And the staff report indicates these specific goals and policies of the general plan. Moving forward to housing projects, there are four affordable housing projects that consist of the Habitat for Humanity project, the Los Haciendas project, the Vine Creek project, and the Uptown Temecula project totaling about 143 or so units. The staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the land use and housing elements of the adopted general There are 57 infrastructure projects, one big one being the comprehensive general plan update. Other projects include enhancements and improvements to the bike lanes and trails, Old Town sidewalk improvements, and library technology enhancements. There will also be new infrastructure projects that include the Old Town Parklets program and EV charging stations. And several public safety infrastructure projects that include fire station improvements and renovations and citywide sidewalk projects. The staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the land use, circulation, open space conservation, growth management, public facilities, public safety, community design, air quality, and economic development elements of the adopted general plan. There are 20 parks and recreation projects. These projects include the design and construction of pickleball courts at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, the splash pad and shade structure conversion project at the Community Recreation Center, playground equipment enhancements, and safety servicing, and more. These projects also include several renovations and repairs to existing parks and recreation facilities such as the Mike Nigar Community Dog Park, the Harvesting Community Park building renovations and expansion, and sports court resurfacing at various parks and facilities. Staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the open space conservation, community design, growth management, public facilities, and air quality elements of the adopted general plan. And lastly, there are three projects funded by Community Facilities District Bonds, which include the Butterfield Stage Road Extension, the Nicholas Road Extension and Improvements, and Pachanga Parkway Environmental Mitigation. The staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that these projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the circulation and open space conservation elements of the adopted general plan. Staff has reviewed the draft fiscal years 2025-2029 CIP projects and has defined it as not a project under the Secret Guidelines Section 15378B4 and is exempt under Secret Guidelines Sections 15061B3 and 15262. And staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution making a finding of consistency with the general plan for the proposed draft fiscal years 2025-2029 capital improvement program and make a finding of exemption under Sections 15378B4, 15061B3, and 15262 of the California Environmental Quality Act. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. And we also have Awklin Oddwear, the Principal Civil Engineer, for any project-specific questions.
Thank you, Katie. We'll start with questions. Commissioner Ruiz.
Yeah, thank you. And if this question's not appropriate this time, then please let me know. But in our packets, a detailed list, obviously, of all of those within there. Can you just remind us how the priority is looked at within those projects? I mean, it's a $927 million fund, obviously, but some of these, I'm sure, are going to gain more priority over others.
Yeah, are you in reference to, like, when the projects are?
More in general, kind of a thing? I mean, there's 100 and something, you know, projects on there, so.
So I think the first place we start is what's funded and what's not funded. So if it's funded, it's a higher priority than unfunded. And then, of course, the city council establishes the priorities beyond that, generally at the budget workshop every year, and then at the city council meeting where they actually establish the budget for the year, and then through discussions throughout the year. But generally speaking, if it's unfunded, it's a lower priority. If it's funded, it's a higher priority. And then from the funded projects, in terms of staffing time and ability to get it done, the council provides us direction on that.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions?
Okay, and good question. And also, I have actually three specific questions, and probably Ron can answer this, maybe, or Avalon. So the CRC, the renovations at the CRC, I've just had a lot of people asking me, like, what exactly is happening and if it will ever be done? So can you speak to that? Okay, I hope you have a really good answer.
So as you know, it's, the overall project was to basically revamp the whole CRC. It was originally going to be one project, and that proved to be a little tough to handle in one swing. So we broke it up and looked at the first phase, which is just completed, and that was really bringing it up to standards, addressing a lot of maintenance needs and replacement of existing mechanical features, as well as flooring and things like that, just to get it to the point where we're at Phase Two. And Phases Two and Three do involve more of what you would call like an improvement, so increasing in square footage, redoing offices, and anything else that TCSD primarily determined would be needed to bring this facility up to what is, how they've been running it, but with a, you know, obviously, a much older building. Phase Two is, I believe, it's around 30% to 60% complete, designed.
Thirty to 60%?
But as we continue to bring those improvements, and this was all based on just like an initial looking at the project as a whole, and we broke it up into the Phase One, Two, and Three. After Phase One was done, or in construction, we began design of Phase Two. But even as we got into that design, staff and others determined that, hey, this might be better. So that process is ongoing now, and we believe that is scheduled for not the end of this fiscal year, but next, our calendar year for construction. So our staff is working closely with Erica and her folks as to what parts should be in Phase Two, and of course, that's balanced against the available budget.
Right, okay. So that, so it's kind of indefinite right now as far as the construction going on, would you say?
For Phase Two, it's on schedule for the end of next year, I believe.
End of 2025?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
We've got, we were trying to do it back to back to back in a three-year period, but that was getting kind of tough, both money-wise and performance-wise, and maybe take a slower look at things that were going to be included. Because the initial scope, as you might know, was from a few years ago, and then we broke it up.
Right.
And then as we kept operating and seeing things, we kept getting more input.
Okay, okay. And then I have two, and you can just hang out there, that'll be awesome. I have two more projects. First of all, very excited about pickleball. Woohoo, that's happening. And then on the parks improvement program, there's one park that I have brought up before, and I don't see it on there on that list of, it's the, I can always forget the name of it, but it's one right across the street from Jackson Elementary. It's just a little park, just a little neighborhood park. And that, I always have people asking me about that park, like, when is that park going to be renovated? Do we have any idea if that's even in the works?
Actually, I don't know off the top of my head. I can get back to you on that.
Yeah.
There is, I know there's a program for, you know, doing the park improvements. I think the current year is Ronald Reagan, that.
Right.
That structure.
Yeah, if you can just get back to me on that park, and I can't remember the name of it. That doesn't really help you.
That's okay.
But it's right across from. Right across from Jackson Elementary in Red Hawk.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all I have. Thank you so much for all your work on the pickleball courts.
No problem.
Woohoo, excited about that, so, thank you.
Commissioner Watts?
No question.
Commissioner Solis?
I just have a comment. I see a lot of these housing projects that are happening, and I think it's a great opportunity for some residents to move in. My neighbor moved into one of these, and she's really happy. So these projects, you know, they start, and you don't see, like, nothing's happening, but when they do get built, and people move in, they're really happy. So that was my experience from one of these projects. And I have another question. Is there like a page online that we can look at and to see where each project is, like, if it's under construction, or when the completion date will be, or anything like that?
So one of the things, there's not a single page, but one of the things you can look for each month, second meeting of council meetings, there is a CIP project study or project status report. It's not every project that's in here, but it is what we consider somewhat active. So all the construction projects are in there, and the ones that are in design that are, seem to be of interest, is what we list in there. And what you'll have is a general description, a kind of snapshot of where we're at right now, so it'll say, like, for CRC Phase Two, if we're at 60%, and I think that's what it has in there. But you can look for that every month. And if you need anything specific, if you call our division and ask for the project manager for.
Okay.
Anything in this book, we can get you to the right person.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions.
Can I just tell them the name of the park?
Oh, okay.
Adam, help me out. It's Paseo Gallante.
Okay. But you said it was across from Helen Hunt Elementary?
Uh, Jackson Elementary.
Oh, okay.
Paseo Gallan. Thank you.
The, there's a Butterfield Road Extension project. Is that the same project that is done, that, or is that something in addition to what's been done?
What was listed in Katie's, there are a few CFD projects, and it is the one, the one that referenced there is the one that is complete, the Butterfield Stages One, Two, and Three. You may have heard that there is talk of Murrieta and the county extending it beyond.
Right.
That is not anywhere.
That's not ours, anyway.
Correct.
Okay. The other question is the roundabout that's for Deportola and Jedediah Smith. Is that something that's going to require property acquisitions? And if so, have they been made already?
They have not been made, if they're needed. My understanding is, and just, you know, last night, the contract was awarded to the designer to look at things. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, preliminarily, the thought was that it wouldn't, no additional right-of-way would be needed. But that firm has been hired to not only design, but do a lot of public outreach. But I believe that same group felt like a proper roundabout could fit within the existing right-of-way.
So the design's not complete yet?
It hasn't started.
Okay, but, okay.
But.
But there's, right now, there's, there's, we're not anticipating any property acquisitions, then?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, let me see if there's anything else here. Okay, that's all I have. If we want to begin discussion, we'll start with you, Adam.
I don't really have anything further. I don't think there's anything in here that stands out as something that wouldn't qualify under what staff's recommending.
Okay. Anything? Yep, good.
We're lucky to have so many projects and so many funding behind them.
Yeah, it's a very long read. You know, one of my comments is, when I read through hours' worth of all the projects, I was shocked that we could do all that in the next five years, that, I think, what did it add up to 100, several, what, 700 million dollars?
Eight to 900 million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a billion dollars. So, and I would assume that a good portion of that money is coming from grants and other outside sources.
I don't know, Ron, I don't know if you can, if you recall, I believe the figure was something like 60%, 60% or 70% grants and other funding source.
Other funding sources.
Yeah, not general fund.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well, good luck. So do I have a motion here?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
So we have a motion made by Commissioner Ruiz, is that what I heard? Did you hear that? Okay. And a second by Commissioner Solis, and we'll have a vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's a five to zero.
Thank you, Avalon, for all your work on this. This is, this is really great. Shows what kind of city we are, right?
Okay, next, we do have a public hearing, so I'm going to have to read this again. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing, or may appear to be heard in support of or in opposition of the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. Public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary, or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to the planningcommission@temeculaca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal to the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 days after service of written notice of the decision. Appeal must be filed on the appropriate Community Development Department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. So if there's anyone else who would like to speak and has not submitted a card, please do so quickly. Okay, let me find the, okay, so what we're hearing is item number three, planning application number PA 22-0035, a development plan for the construction of an approximately 288,269 square foot, 355 room, seven-story, 91-foot, full-service hotel that includes an approximately 174,382 square foot parking garage, conference facilities, ballrooms, full-service spa, restaurants, bars, lounges, retail outlets, workout facility, outdoor pool area, and an outdoor wedding garden. And PA 22-0037, a tentative parcel map, TPM 38349, to combine 10 existing lots into a single lot. The project is located on the east side of Front Street between First Street and Second Street. Parcel numbers 922-072-005, 007, 010, 011, 013, 016, 018, 020, and 021, and 023. And that's a mouthful. Scott, would you like to present to us?
I guess so. Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, planning commissioners. As you stated, this is planning application numbers PA 220035 and 0037, the Temecula Resort and Spa. So it is a development plan for the construction of an approximately 288,269 square foot, 355 room, seven-story, 91-foot, full-service hotel that includes an approximately 174,382 square foot parking garage. So a hotel of this size is a permitted use within the Old Town specific plan so long as it meets specific design criteria and development standards of the zoning district. Also, tentative parcel map, TPM 38349, to combine 10 existing lots into a single lot. Project is located here on your screen, on the east side of Old Town Front Street between First Street and Second Street adjacent to Interstate 15. A little bit of history on the project. The project was previously considered at the planning commission on September 6th of last year. At the conclusion of the hearing, the planning commission voted 5-0 to accept the staff recommendation of redesign of the project in order to comply with the development standards of the Old Town specific plan. Since that meeting, staff has worked with the applicant on the project design in order to meet all the development standards of the Old Town specific plan. A little bit of analysis, project is located in the downtown core Hotel Overlay District of the Old Town specific plan. It's seven stories, 91 feet high at its highest point, 355 rooms, 385 parking spaces within a parking garage, 384 parking spaces are required for 355 hotel rooms, and approximately 8,507 square feet of meeting space. So the Hotel Overlay District, so this is Old Town. These are all the zones within Old Town, and the specific area where you're allowed to do a hotel of this size is located here in the crosshatching in the red circle. So full-service hotels, May 25, 2010, the city council adopted ordinance 10-09, which allows for full-service hotels at a building height greater than other buildings in Old Town, which is up to eight stories and 100 feet in height. So anywhere else in Old Town, you're allowed to go four stories and up to 55 feet. When you're in this hotel overlay, you're allowed to go eight stories and 100 feet. So that height incentive was in, or the height allowance was an incentive to bring additional economic activity into Old Town, such as conferences, large meetings, events, things of that nature. So, but in order to receive the height incentive and designation of a full service hotel, projects are required to meet the design criteria and development standards of the zoning district in addition to the supplemental requirements for full-service hotels. So those requirements include hotel lobbies shall be located along streets, plazas, courtyards, or sidewalks to create visual interest for pedestrians. Hotel rooms shall be accessed from an interior hallway. Hotels shall provide an onsite restaurant with table service provided primarily by waitperson seating for at least 30 customers and full menu offering multiple entrees with onsite food preparation. The hotels should provide conference facility space to accommodate a minimum of 1,000 people. The development shall be designed to create an outdoor pedestrian space featuring amenities such as benches, outdoor dining, public art, gardens, courtyard, forecourt, or plaza. Building facade shall be articulated with wall offsets, recesses, openings, ornamentation, and colors and materials to add texture with special detail to the streetscape. Pool and spa facilities are permitted on patios, balconies, or terraces located on the second floor or above when integrated into the building architecture and design. So the project, as proposed, meets all the design criteria and development standards of that zoning district. So how do you get into the hotel? So the main entrance to the hotel is off of Old Town Front Street, and then you have pedestrian access also off of First Street and off of Second Street. So off of First Street and Second Street, you go into the parking garage, and then you access the entrance in the parking garage to the hotel. For vehicular access, you have two locations here on First Street and then on Second Street. And then the parking, the vehicular access and the walking access is separated. So unlike here at City Hall where you go through this, you have the same access, you're walking in the driveway to get in and out of the building, here they have proposed, which is a much better design, a separation of people and car. So in terms of the interior of the hotel, here on the ground floor, you have that exterior entrance from Old Town Front Street, the interior entrance from the parking garage, the registration area. the registration area, grand ballroom, banquet lounge with outdoor seating, and that is what that looks like. And then you have the restaurant with outdoor dining as well. And then the back of the house, which includes the kitchen, security, pantry, all of that. On the second floor along Front Street, or the ground floor around, on Second Street, you have the junior ballroom, meeting rooms, day spa facilities, restaurant with outdoor dining. So on the second floor of the gallery, or on top of the gallery, you have additional outdoor dining on Second Street that wraps around the Front Street. You have the gym and facility with the yoga. You have retail outlets on Second Street. And then you have the mechanical rooms and utility equipment. Previously, all those mechanical rooms and utility equipment were located on Second Street. We'll show that here a little bit later, but just so you can see where they've been relocated along the alley in the back of the building. On the third floor, you have the pool and spa area, the wedding garden, which is overlooking Old Town Front Street, the dog park or dog run. And then there are five guest rooms here that have decks that overlook Second Street. In terms of the architecture, the proposed architecture is a neoclassical revival style, which is an allowed style for their specific plan. So, and style elements within the design of the project are as follows. So you have vertical columns, vertical coins, gallery frontage that wraps around the corner. Here on Old Town Front Street, you have a horizontal band that helps to break up the massing of the first and second floor, decorative cornice. And then as you go down the side of First Street, you have the roofline, roofline pediment, some motive, and then a zoom in, and then a further zoom in on exactly what that looks like. And then again, you have a gallery frontage on First Street as well. Terms of landscaping, so the Old Town specific plan, the street trees are proposed along the streetscape of First Street, Second Street, and Old Town Front Street. So there's also the tentative parcel map with the project, which is consolidating the ten existing contagious parcels into a single parcel. So these are the existing ten parcels. And this would be the proposed parcel. So getting into the Old Town development standards. So the Old Town specific plan provides development standards for all projects with the Old Town specific plan. As previously proposed, the project did not meet the following development standards. That was the pedestrian experience and the building relationship to the street, as well as building articulation. So the project now meets those development standards in the following manner, along with all other development standards of the Old Town specific plan. So for previous non-compliance of a development standard for pedestrian experience and building relationship to the street, the previously proposed project did not promote or provide a pedestrian-friendly experience, atmosphere, or streetscape enlivened the streets, and did not provide a visual interest for pedestrians along any of the frontages or other than entrances into the building. So this is the original proposal. So you had a restaurant here on the front, and that was the banquet lounge, but if you're looking at it, it's just one building. It's just a flat surface. You don't know where anything's located. So compliance with the Old Town development standard. So you don't have a gallery frontage with the restaurant with outdoor dining along Old Town Front and First Street, as well as the banquet lounge with outdoor seating as well. Another previous non-compliance of a development standard. The repetitive windows along the first floor of the building did not open up the street and therefore closed off the building to the outside environment. No patio dining, large doors or windows that can open to the street were provided, which would provide a pedestrian atmosphere and synergy between the built and pedestrian environment. Again, this was the original proposal, which was one long, flat surface. The only entrance there was into the main entrance of the hotel. The only way you could be telling that was the main entrance was because of the small canopy over the entrance. So now the compliance with the Old Town development standard. You now have the banquet lounge with outdoor seating. Additional window type proposed, so it's not the same monotonous windows along both the first and second floor of the building. And you have a more welcoming entrance. So this was the previous entrance, where it's the small canopy. You're walking by, it just, it could be an entrance into any part of the building. And this is the current one, where the canopy's been extended. It's more inviting. You can tell it's an entrance into a building. And it also has the synergy with the banquet dining there on the left. So the non-compliance with building articulation. The proposed project is a commercial block building with building facades that exceed 50 or linear feet on all sides. The applicant previously proposed a one-foot or two-foot building articulation every 50 feet or less on all sides of the building. This minimal amount of articulation was not appropriate for the massing of a building of this proposed height. So this shows where the one-foot or the two-foot building offsets were as you go down First Street. So the new compliance with that Old Town development standard is they were able to increase it to either two feet or three feet in depth, depending where you are on the building. This extends all the way around the building. And then when you get to, this is the corner of the building along, or along the freeway. So you have a four feet in depth and three feet in depth. So they've gone from anywhere from one to two. A lot of times, spaces, it wasn't even two. It was more like 18 inches, from two to three, and in certain locations, four feet. So the shop fronts, shop fronts facing First Street, Second Street, and Old Town Front Street all exceeded 100 feet, and previously did not propose architectural, architectural elements into the facades that convey, convey the appearance of multiple shops rather. One large, as previously proposed, shop front incorporated repetitive identical windows that did not contain any character or distinguish from one shop to another. So you have the previous elevation along Front Street. And you have the current elevation. So again, when you put them side by side, you can see the difference, the difference between the two buildings, the work that's been done by the applicant and the architect. And then this is along Second Street. So again, the previous and the current. So once again, you're going along here on the previous thing, there was a small retail, all the, more slides later, but on the left side was all the mechanical equipment directly behind the door. So there was no activity along the areas. And then currently, you have all that area as retail other than the pedestrian entrance into the hotel and the vehicular entrance into the hotel. So at the Planning Commission meeting on September 6th, staff identified design concerns in the form of the corner of Old Town Front Street and First Street, and the Second Street pedestrian experience as additional design concerns. The proposed project has addressed those design concerns in the following manner. So for the corner of Old Town Front Street and First Street, the previous project design for the corner of the building was no different than any other portion of the building. The revised project has incorporated a gallery architecture element with a large arch on the corner. I extended the gallery on First Street around the corner to Front Street. And the roof of the gallery also provides for the ability to provide outdoor dining, which in turn activates the corner of the building. So we've seen it a couple of times tonight, but that's the previous proposal. The restaurant entrance and the hotel entrance, which is right there by the arch. And then the current design is the restaurant entrance and the hotel entrance. And then zooming in on that, that's the top of the gallery that has outdoor dining on it as well. So the Second Street pedestrian experience, so as previously proposed, there was a 900-square-foot retail outlet, pedestrian and vehicle entrances, storage room, fire sprinkler riser room, electrical room, transformer room. Twenty-seven percent of the frontage was used for retail use. Fifty-one percent of the frontage was used for back-of-the-house uses. So as currently proposed, 2,000, there's a 2,580-square-foot retail outlet, a 628-square-foot retail outlet, and then obviously the pedestrian and vehicle entrances are still there. That totals 77 percent of the frontage for retail uses, and 0 percent of the frontage for the back-of-the-house uses. And then on both proposals, obviously, we have those five third-story decks that are used for hotel guests that are staying in those rooms. That's data. So this is what we were talking about. This is the original previous proposal. So you got a storage room there, followed by the 980-square-foot retail area. And then these were the transformer room, fire riser room, and electrical rooms were. So currently, you have the 628-square-foot retail area, and then the larger retail area that takes up the rest of the frontage to help activate that half cul-de-sac that's over there. So staff has identified design concerns that have been competent on and discussed with the applicant during the entitlement process. Those concerns include the pool location and architectural design guidelines. So in regards to the pool location, the location of the pool's been a concern with the staff since the pre-application stage of the project. The pool's proposed along and above Interstate 15. The pool area is approximately 101 feet from travel lanes. Concerns include noise, automobile emissions, and shade within the pool area. A shade study was requested by staff and provided showing on the longest day of the year. So the summer solstice of June 21st of last, two years ago actually at this point, the majority of the pool and the deck will be in the shade. That being said, the Old Town specific plan does not have requirements or standards for specific locations of pools, other than they are located on the second floor or above. So the left is the shade study. You can see the majority of the pool area is in the shade at 3:00 PM on that afternoon. Area on the right shows how close the pool area would be to the travel lanes. And then that's a view of the pool if you're looking down into it, if you were traveling on the freeway. In addition to that, Architectural Design Guidelines, page V-19 of the Old Town specific plan details an Architectural Design Guideline related to building form that reads, and it's long. Variety on street edges was created through the use of various frontage types, galleries, arcades, et cetera. Future buildings in Old Town are encouraged to reinforce this historic pattern through the use of simple and clear building massing enlivened with various frontage types. Building facades that exceed 50 or linear feet should incorporate varying architectural expression, character, and roof lines so as to appear to be made up of various smaller facades. So the project was presented to the City Council Old Town Steering Committee. These are the four times that that presentation was made. The project was also presented to the Planning Commission Old Town Temecula Subcommittee, and the most recent being March of this year. In addition to this, before I wrap up, staff and the Planning Commission did receive a comment letter for the attorney representing the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters, and that was placed on the dais, and it's also out in the lobby if anyone in attendance wanted to take a look at that comment letter. So the environmental determination is Section 15332, which is a Class 32 for infill development projects. And with that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission approve PA 220035 and PA 220037, subject to the conditions of approval. The applicant team has been provided with all those conditions of approval. They're in agreement with all the conditions. They had no questions on the conditions. That concludes my report. I'm here for questions. And the applicant representative and the architect are also here.
Okay, thank you, Scott. This is the portion of the meeting where the commissioners ask questions to staff. And we will begin down here with Commissioner Solis. Did that get you off guard?
I was getting ready. I think I just have one question for staff. And if we go to the site plan along Old Town Front Street, there's a long, like, you could say like alley, like 10-foot alley. Is there like a requirement that the building has to be spaced out, or is that like an egress requirement, or?
In the survey.
There you go.
Ron, you want to handle this one?
Yeah, that's a public alleyway that exists today. It's mapped on the Old Town map, and therefore they followed the line work that was associated with the map.
And then, and then it goes to Second Street. Is that right? Yeah, okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Watts?
Do you have any sort of representation of, like, the pool scene? I didn't see one in there, but... In other words, you know, what, what would it actually look like? Anyhow, while you're looking for that, the pool has been a big discussion item since the very beginning, and yet we don't see much change on it, at least from what I can remember. And I'm just wondering, I'm sure the applicant will have a chance to maybe answer the question, but are there any good reasons that are articulated why there's so much resistance and insistence on keeping the pool in that location?
I will defer to the applicant on that. And I've seen, they have a presentation they also want to do after this, and they do have renderings of that pool area in their presentation.
Okay, I trust that they'll address that concern.
Those renderings were done since they provided our final set of plans.
Okay. That's my only comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, can you just go back to the slide on the 50-foot compliance? Is that, it's probably not very clear. Find that. We just got... I saw it really quickly as it went by, but I wanted to see it again. Do you know what I'm talking about? Yeah, okay. It's a big presentation, so I know there's a lot to look through.
I think we have a frozen computer.
Oh, no. Well, we can, we can come back to that maybe after the applicant, or when you're done.
You're good.
We might want to hold off. Maybe we can take a break. Because we need this computer to be working when we're doing these questions and answers.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
All right, why don't we take a five-minute break?
Just before we fix this computer. Thank you.
Solar flares. Okay, we're gonna get started again. Oh. Okay. Hang on a second. Here they come. Okay, I'm gonna ask everybody on the dais to speak up so that it can be heard clearly. And anyone who is presenting or speaking to do the same, make sure the microphone is closed, because we're just having some, a little bit of problem hearing everybody. So let's, we'll continue with questions where we were here. I think you had a question that... Okay, it's working.
Awesome. Okay, so... All right, can you explain this a little bit, Scott? Kind of the non-compliance, and then what you feel has been compliance on this?
So the specific plan doesn't say there needs to be a specific depth or articulation along a frontage. Previously proposed was just a one-foot or two-foot. As you're looking down any of the Old Town Front Street, First Street, Second Street, it gave the impression of just a flat plain going down the street. As we continued to work with them, they were able to increase it... As we continued to work with them, they were able to increase it to a one-foot or a two-foot offset every fifty feet or less, or in that range. Staff, in working with them and letting them know, felt that that was not enough of a offset or articulation on any of the sides of the building. That was brought up, previous planning commission, that was one of the first things following, your guys following staff's recommendation after planning commission, that we worked with them on, they went back and did some building redesign, and they've increased it, as shown on this slide, to two feet or three feet, depending where you are on the building, and then something like I showed on the other side up to a four-foot. In staff's opinion, that was a very good increase in the depth and the articulation of the offsets, and we feel that it meets the development standard.
Okay, and then also, on the Old Town specific plan, you had a slide that you read, you had a paragraph, we don't have, do we have that in our packet? You know what I'm talking about, about the architectural? I don't think we have it in our...
In the staff report?
Do we have it in this? Oh, we do, where would I find that? I didn't see it. Oh, here it is, I found it, on page seven, is that right? Page V-19 of the Old Town specific plan, I think that's it.
Correct.
I think that's it, right? Yes? Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, seven continues on to eight.
Yeah, I wanted to know where that was. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Okay, Commissioner Ruiz?
Yeah, thank you. And just a question on parking, who has access to the parking garage? Is that strictly for overnight guests, or is that for the retail and restaurant use?
It would be the hotel, the hotel guests or people there for conferences, because the conference facilities have to be set.
So, but if someone's going there just for a meal or just to go shopping, they wouldn't have access to that parking?
There's not parking provided for that, the only parking provided just meets the minimum requirements for the hotel guest or the conference facilities.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Is there anything that says that a restaurant guest could not park in there? That you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, but we would be, I would assume, we would work with the applicant during the building permit review time in order to get some type of gates or other entrances in there, because you want to have the parking minimum met.
Okay. And I can ask the applicant as well. I have one question. The windows in the hotel rooms, do any of them open up to the outside?
Staff has asked that question, and all the times we've asked, we've been told they do not.
They do not, okay. All right, any other questions before we... Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and what I'm going to do right now is to ask the applicant if the applicant would come up, and we're going to give the applicant opportunity to do their presentation before the public has the opportunity to speak. Welcome?
Is there... Okay, so you can hear me. Name is Ross Jackson. Little bit of history about myself. I've been here since 2003 in the area. I've worked with large hospitality, construction crews, construction companies such as Perini Building Company, as well as, I worked on the LA Live venue with AEG. So I'm quite familiar with high-rise hospitality designs and concepts, and I was approached by Mr. Kim to help him mitigate and enhance his hotel. Originally, as you saw the building, let's see, can I have this? As you were shown, as you were shown, this was the original concept of the project. The first comment that everybody had was it looked like a very tall prison building. There was no articulation, there was no wow, pizzazz, and especially being on the south end of Temecula, this needed to be an enhanced visual entry. This picture that you're looking at right now does not provide that enhancement of which Old Town is famous for. The entrance into Old Town is marked by the arches that you see on the left side of this picture, which are still going to be incorporated, but now you're going to have this building facility here. And while I saw this first picture, I agreed with everybody that this picture did not serve justice for the city of Temecula. Being on the Old Town specific plan, being the chairman of the Old Town specific plan, I was very well-versed in the specific plan books and guidelines, as well as their city standards. With this in mind, I took advantage of adding different looks to the building, and of which came up with some of these concepts. And these are what you're looking at now, that we've worked through with the city. And again, now we've taken this area here, let's see, hopefully, how do you adjust that?
There we go, we're good.
Well, it works. It's not, it's not staying in place. Okay, so I'll hold it. So as you can see, the gallery that we located on First Street stopped at a certain location, and then we decided, after we had the conversation with the city staff, we agreed with the articulation of this area needed to be enhanced, and so therefore we moved the gallery, I'm taking it off the picture, we took the gallery and extended around the corner on Front and First, enhancing the, the experience of going into the restaurant. As well as the second, excuse me, Front Street, when you saw the entrance to Front Street, there we go. That was a small, actually, that is a metal frame design that came from nineteen-thirties building back east. So that is a steel awning with steel supports. The intent was only to do it over the main entry of the lobby area right there, but then we decided to enhance it even further and continue it to the end of the building, providing overhead shade and, out of the element, shall we say, for the dining experience in front of the small banquet area right there. To your left of that corner is basically, that is an alley, and next to that is the roadway end. So we left that separation in there for a purpose, we did not want to build onto the property line, we did not want to have issues with debris being stuck in there, trash from things like that falling off the, the third floor and into that area, unable to clean it up. So we left that out as an open area to keep it freshened, so we can always keep it clean and pristine. Second Street has a totally new look, and originally, Mr. Kim wanted that lower level to be an art gallery donated to the city of Temecula as a art gallery for budding artists in the city of Temecula, as well as musicians were going to be allowed to play in there. Now, part of the concept is still, we're going to still do exactly that, we are going to give it an artist area, as well as musician area, but we've enhanced that area by twenty-five-hundred square feet, and we've taken that other location to the left of the entry over there and turned that into, instead of a storage, we've got some retail spaces there. We're going to provide a full-service florist shop that would help accommodate the wedding venues that we have proposed on the third floor, as well as any of the locals will be able to buy florist, flowers from that florist shop. And again, part of the, the problem that we originally had with this entire project was that SoCal Edison was very adamant about the location of the transformer and the transformer being located street-accessible. So we went back to SoCal Edison, and we readdressed the issue, and we had them give us permission to move it onto, shall we say, the east side of the building, which is now a fire lane access around the building, which although it's a private road, it's going to be privately maintained by the ownership, but it's also going to be allowable for, shall we say, overflow drive-through, drive around the building, hit the First Street, and go out of town that way. So that will eliminate, not eliminate, but it will reduce the amount of traffic that's going on Second Street trying to get onto Front Street. Some of that traffic will go around to First Street and go out that way. So we're going to help mitigate some of the traffic issues that we currently have in this location. Having said that, also, we had Rancho, California, they had their water power and issues with us as well, so we now mitigated, I don't have a slide of that, but we have one of the slides that Mr. Kill has, and we can show you that area. And you saw, we relocated all of the utilities off to the backside of the building. Then with that intent, again, we were talking about the coins, the pediments, the articulations of the corners, the accents. This is a approved per city standards. Eight stories or a hundred feet, we are seven stories and ninety-one feet. On these pediments and all these accented columns that you see, we will be having uplights, similar to what the TruX building has on its building, except for the ones that flicker, we are going to have uplights that accentuate those columns, so it'll look a little more dramatic at nighttime. And that will give you that in-and-out articulation that you're looking for during a nighttime presentation. I'm not sure if you're familiar with this kind of a picture that you see right here in front of you. And this is going back to some history. We have a very famous architect that lives in Old Town, and that would be Walt Allen and Associates. Walt Allen coined a phrase saying, "The city of Temecula, Old Town, is like considering a tree. The center of the tree would be Main Street." And as the tree grew, so would the design intents of the city. If you recall back in nineteen sixty-nine or seventy, when you saw pictures, that on Front Street, the only thing you saw was the bank sitting on the corner. And since then, the city has grown, and therefore, design changes have gone and played an effect. Back in the days, you saw mission style, mercantile, and just strictly a western design motif, the Wilty Hotel. All of those hotels fit into that criteria of a very young city. As we move forward out away from that, we hit the nineteen hundreds, and currently where the TruX building sits, that was designed after a building that was ten stories tall in Pennsylvania, owned by Mr. TruX's father at the time. So that was designed to fit into that era of design. Now, in regards to our design, we decided to go with one of the five criterias, which was, originally, the first one was, we did a Spanish design, and it just didn't fit well at all. So then we decided to go with the, the neoclassical design, which, as you well know, the White House, the big house, is a neoclassical design, columns, stature, and the way the windows are designed for a neoclassical design, such as this one here, your first floor, oh, come on, brighten up, there we go, the first floor, all the windows on the first floor have the same architectural design. And as you move up, floor by floor by floor, then you will have a different motif of window styles. The, and then we added the Romeo and Juliet balconies, and to answer your question in regards to, do the windows open? By code, you're not allowed to have the windows open any more than four inches, strictly by code. You're not allowed to have a sliding glass door that would open a full six feet or something like that. It's because of safety, that's strictly what it is. So the Romeo and Juliet balconies that you see are meant to be just that, they are just meant to be a design element, similar to what the approved TruX Development Hotel, the TruX Hotel had the same design with the Romeo and Juliet balconies that did not work operable at all. So, in this case, we wanted to use that design element into this building to give it more of a particular look and style. Even though the colors are somewhat muted, we have a color palette that we selected and approved by planning, there's room for interpretations in different colors at this time. Basically, a color is a color, we can choose and select at a later date if we're allowed to. And once we, once we do that, we will resubmit for approval on the colors, the exterior colors. It was also mentioned the fact of full dining and casual dining in the public restrooms, and these four pictures that you see up in front of you are the dining, the main dining, the casual dining in the public restrooms. We didn't leave anything out as far as design and elegance. We believe that if you're going to be a star, you need to look a star. So, now, I have one more thing I need to address, and I will pull out the reading glasses for this one. The rebuttal for the Temecula Spa Resort and Spa Project is in regards to the carpenters or WSCRC submitting their concerns about the project. The EIR study for this area has already been approved and adopted by the city some time ago, and, but they're still citing that there are issues in regards to water quality, noise quality, emissions, let's see, where was that? And so, in regards to that, we would like to say we have done everything in our power, and we feel that we have actually met and exceeded our concerns, and we do follow in the statement of the CEQA, the CEQA guidelines. Let's see, regardless portion of this, categorical exempts. To answer your question, also in regards to the emissions being off of the fifteen, as you stated earlier, is that the freeway airflow and pathogens and things like this. In the afternoon, in the city of Temecula, you can stand anywhere in the city and get gale-force winds of twenty, twenty-five miles an hour through this area that are heading over the mountain and to the east. So it's very unlikely that you're going to get pollution, exhaustive fumes coming back off the freeway into the city of Temecula. And we didn't feel like, and we have wind barriers, wind screens around the property, so we didn't feel like that was really a necessary issue to be concerned about. In regards to the location of the swimming pool, we did come up with several plans and concepts and presented them, we talked about them, and we showed the pros and cons for them. The con is that if we move, the swimming pool's on a third floor, it's not on the ground floor, it's on the third floor. So if we move the swimming pool from the east to the west of the front of the building, it would only be able to be located in the location of the wedding venue. That wedding venue generates a lot of income for the city, as well as generates income for the hotel itself. So I personally would not want to be spending thousands of dollars and having a swimming pool with a bunch of screaming little kids right next to me, and that was the only location that would have adapted to the relocation of the pool. Not only did that create a problem, but it also created a problem with egress. Having the swimming pool and having the wedding venue located on the same Having the swimming pool and having the wedding venue located on the same level at that area, that corner of the building, would have created an egress situation inside the building for safety. The only way we could have mitigated this is what we've shown and designed. We've done everything in our power to enhance the area. And I feel like it will be a welcome sight. Even though it does create shade in three o'clock in the afternoon, I would still say that based on that, the city, we should leave that up to the guest. We provided the swimming pool, if they don't want to use it, it's okay. But at least we have the amenity for the swimming pool, the spa, and the dog park, which none of the hotels that had been presented at any point in time have shown such a classy element as what we're presenting here. The wedding venue itself is truly going to be spectacular. And it's not just meant to be a wedding venue, that can be an event venue at any time. You can have a parade gathering party up there, a Christmas gathering party up there, whatever it can be for use for anything. So we felt that that was the best use of that area as well. In response also to the union, let us do our part first. We're not saying we're against the union, providing work for union companies. In fact, a lot of the companies that I currently use are union on a non-union project. So I don't see any problems with us working with the union. Or we can address their concerns in a formal letter to them if they so choose or desire. But this is not really, in our opinion, something to worry about. See what else is there. Parking. Commissioner Ruiz asked questions in regards to parking. Everybody knows that a parking lot or a hotel parking structure itself is based on a certain percentage of occupancy. Thirty to 40% runs during the week, 70 to 80% runs on the weekends, and up as high as 100%. So during the week, there's going to be open spots. Anybody's allowed to park in our parking lot and our parking structure. We also have 137 EV charging stations in our facilities. So all they have to do is come to the front desk, make a request, and we'll allow them to park. And if it's an EV car, we allow them to go to an EV parking spot and charge accordingly. So, again, I feel that, as a good neighbor, Mr. Kim is trying to promote himself to be a good neighbor and is willing to work with the parking situation. As we all know, we do have slight parking issues. And by having this 355-room hotel located on the south end, you are correct that we will have parking issues because we're taking the parking lot away that we're currently using as a free parking lot. So with that in mind, he is fully aware and has no problems in offering up parking spaces inside for non-guest spaces. And then I will answer any questions that you gentlemen, ladies, have. If not, I will be more than happy to turn it over to Mr. Kill and let him do his part of the presentation.
I'm going to suggest that we hold questions for now, is that okay? All right, what we'll do is, we'll have Mr. Kim present, and then we'll have, we'd like to hear from the public, and then we'll go back.
We'll come back.
In our discussion, we'll ask questions and everything.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. You want to do that first? Oh, okay, all right, okay. Welcome, Mr. Kim.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Kill, not Kim. From One Stop Design, I'm the project architect. And after the first planning commission meeting in last eight months that we have worked with staff, the various aspect of design change, and while we are doing it, and we have worked with the city staff and the public utility agencies, and we closely work with them to come up with the better designs. And ultimately, we have made our project that everyone is satisfied with. So now, we have our project tonight to present to you for your review and approval. And project location, as our staff elaborated a lot, and I will just go fast forward on it. And key elements, we have three key elements need to be addressed. Architectural design and building interaction with pedestrian on the street level. And vitalize Second Street providing retail outlet. And we chose neo-classical revival style. And left-hand side is that Old Town special plan portion of the copy. And we do have few reference photos on the right-hand side. And building composition on the base, we have a large block of limestone. In the middle, decorative molding around all the fenestrations. And balconies with decorative railings and accent pilaster columns and coins on all the corners of our buildings. And top, that accent pediment that meets with the pilaster columns as an accent of the element and variation of the roof lines. And building facade design on Old Town special plan, as our staff reported, I'll just go really fast on that. It's a chapter five is a design guideline, and it talks about not exceeding 50 linear feet of the architectural expression. But we found out another section, which is section, chapter four, land use and urban development standards. It talks about on the corner lot and two facade of the equal architectural expressions. And that commercial block building may be permitted to be composed of one dominant volume. And we took this advice and pursued our design. Facade design on Second Street and Front Street and all the corners and every element not exceeding 50 linear foot has its own breaks and layering of the massing. Second Street elevation and Front Street elevation. And First Street. And this is elevation that we are proposing. And we do have, every corner has details and elaborated with all that architectural details as much as possible. Pedestrian interaction with the building on street level at First Street. We have changed the gallery locations, it was previous. We changed that location wrapping up to the corners of Front and First. And also, we have a connection from the interior side of the restaurant to the outdoor dining area. Previously, look of that and proposed look of gallery on the corner. Main Street entrance, I mean, main entrance of the building. And we do have outdoor dining area front of the hotel at the Front Street side of it. Previously, basically, we didn't provide anything. And hotel entrance has been assessed in. And we provide sitting and dining area front of the hotel, which is interconnected with the banquet lounge inside of it. Look of the main entrance. And vitalize Second Street was one of the biggest tasks that we had. Previously, we only had about thousands of foot of a retail store because of the older utility has to be facing on the Second Street side per utility companies. And we have worked with them, and we were able to relocate electrical and utility facilities to the fire lane side. And we made all the Second Street a retail outlet. So only exception is that vehicular access and required building exit. And we have added a gallery, the designs of it as well, and it's look from the top. Outdoor amenities, that we do have a wedding garden on the second, the third floor level. And we do have a swimming pool on the floor level. And this swimming pool is located 25 to 30 foot above the ground level. And as you notice, that little key map that I had on the left bottom side of the screen, and swimming pool is physically separated by the hotel. So that we thought of the activity and noise level of the two different activities is different, and wedding garden, you don't want to have too much of a noise coming from the other side of it. So it just works perfectly for separating the activities and noise levels and so and so forth. And we did have a presentation of that, the other schemes that we studied before for the last hearing. And we had a comment from the commission meeting, that location of the pool seems okay as it is. That's the reason why we took that presentation completely out of today's presentation. And one of the comments that we had at the time was that interior gas room ceiling height, how could we maintain nine foot clear knowing that our floor-to-floor dimension is only 10 foot in height? So one of the commissioner was saying that, where is the mechanical unit and pipe and running all that? And so we made the slide for that. And this is the building section of the hotel gas room tower. And as you see there, that we have a 10-foot floor-to-floor in gas room. This is a structural plan. And structural engineer is using 10-inch metal floor joist at 20 inches on center, which means that 20, every 24 inches that he is putting there, the joist. Back to the section, and this is the blow up of the, what is going on in between the floor and ceiling cavity. We have a 10-inch metal floor joist, and we do have to have three-quarter inches of floorboard, which is a fire protection. And bottom there is that half inches of resilient channel with 5/8 of an inch, that's right wall. And it gives you 12 inches of a floor space. So 10 feet of 12 inches, so we have nine feet of ceiling height. So how we hide all that mechanical unit and pipes? This is a profile of the metal floor joist. You may notice that metal joist has little holes in between, in the middle of the profile. It's a smaller dimension of that is one and one-half inches, and larger one is about three-and-a-quarter inches of the size. And smaller pipes and conduit can go through that little hole in the middle of the joist. And our mechanical unit that we are using on the ceiling is that profile of the 17 and a half inches of a wide, and depth is only six inches of it. So 17 and a half inches of a wide fits into the 20, in between 24 inches of a metal joist. And 10 inches of a depth of the floor joist will cover six inches of a mechanical unit there. So therefore, we have a nine-foot clear ceiling for the gas room without any drop ceiling whatsoever. And all that makeup airs and fresh air is handled at the little shaft that we had on the bathroom side of it. This concludes my presentation, and we are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So you wanted to ask questions now? Okay, all right, go ahead, why don't you start? You don't have any questions, do you have any questions?
I do, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, can see the changes of work that's gone into it. I do still feel like there's some missed opportunities with the design. The pool obviously being one of them, the shade element for what we're looking at. But something that you mentioned, I had jotted down earlier as well, the balconies don't open. And I don't understand why. I think that's a really big missed opportunity, not only for potential maybe upsell of that style of room, but location is what I think is one of the benefit features of here. So on those vertical columns, why can you not walk out?
Sure, I mean, I was meant to explain that, and I forgot about it. And first of all, the parking issues, we will have a parking attendant for the hotel. So whatever that overfloor the parking is going to handle by the parking attendant and from the beginning of the project. And second of all, that the window and doors on the balcony, it is fully operable. And that was the reason why we made wrought iron fence around it. Because of the quote is, some of that was last miss, the last presentation was that, the building quote talks about when you have a fully opened doors and windows and from the floor of 30 inches, if you have openings of it, you have to have a protection around it. So that's why we have that balcony railing, which is located from the floor to 42-inch in height, serves in that purpose as well with aesthetic, the purpose as well. So our door, we are proposing eight foot width of the sliding door, fully door. So you can just open the sliding door fully, and you'll see the wrought iron fence right front of it, that's what we are proposing.
That's on all of the ones?
All of the guest rooms.
So what about the vertical columns that have the curved railing in the diagram? You can't step out onto that, what you guys are calling a balcony, you can't step out on that?
We didn't make the, you know, that approachable balcony because of that wasn't the thought that we had. We thought, yeah, we will just have a full operable doors. We, we thought, yeah, we will just have a full operable doors for every guestroom. And that will just give them the enough fresh airs and look that they want to have with the protection of the railing. But that balcony is not accessible.
Is that something you would consider?
We may.
Okay.
If that's the part of the condition, then we'll try to.
I, I do have one other question as well. Sorry. On, let me see, what level is this? On the second floor, it looks like you've got proposed the yoga studio and the gym positioned in that prime corner. Is that correct?
Yes.
And those windows there are looking out to the outdoor dining area? So outdoor diners are potentially looking into people doing yoga and the gym? Am I understanding that correctly? Is it, is there a reason that was put in that location versus maybe moving the, the whole complete dining into that prime real estate area of the corner?
We, we thought we will have that gym and yoga place to be accessible to that, that outdoor space as well for fresh air as well too. But it wasn't really defined that well. So it could be used as our outdoor dining, sitting area, as well as that whoever wants to access from their gym and yoga side of it can go out to that deck area as well.
It, it just seems like since outdoor dining is around and with that prime location, the indoor dining could have flowed into that and moved the gym out so that, you know, if I'm looking at this as a resort and I'm happening to be outside on a, on a morning having breakfast, and I'm looking right over and seeing someone doing yoga or working out, it just doesn't seem like a, like an ideal location. I was just curious on that, on that decision there. And the pool location we touched, yeah, I think the patios are definitely missed. You've got 355 rooms with only five having some sort of an outdoor deck area. I mean, I'll discuss with the colleagues later, but I, I think that's, you know, a missed opportunity for you. But thank you for answering the questions.
Anything yet? No, okay. Gary?
Okay. Ross, you may want to answer some questions. What sort of capacity for weddings do you envision? Like numbers, numbers of people? Hundred, 200?
I can't answer that right now. I'd have to come back to that. It's going to be.
Okay, that's all right. The point is, that would entail a large number of guests coming for the wedding, correct?
Correct.
Or it could be a small number, but it could be. I don't know what the number is. Where, what's the idea as far as where they would park? Would they, would, would there be enough spaces in there if there's enough in the parking garage for hotel guests only? And if the weekend, like you said, it's almost full, 100% maybe. Would there be a lack of parking when they have to overflow into the city lots? Depending on the size of the wedding, of course. I'm just curious what your thinking is on that.
That hasn't been brought up, and it's a very good question. I would, I would say that we were going to have a shuttle service. And if we need to, we'd do offsite parking. But we also have a city parking lot right down the corner from us, right behind the stampede, which would be a viable location for parking.
Okay.
So my, that's the best I can answer for you at this time.
Yeah, I could see weddings being small. I could, I don't know what the upper limit would be because I don't, I'm just not that familiar with it. But I am concerned with the parking that would be associated with that. And that, and if it's going to go into existing overflow lots, and that's going to conflict with weekend events and that type of thing. And as you know, that garage can get filled very fast when we're having special events. So that's one of my concerns. As far as the pool goes, it's third story, correct?
Third story, correct.
And how, like approximately how close is it to the southbound lanes on the freeway on I-15? Roughly?
Little over 100, let's see. The right away from the edge of Caltrans right away is 60 feet. So we're looking at probably about 125, 130 feet from.
From the lanes?
From the lanes itself. And then there, if you notice, also there is a sound barrier.
I didn't notice. That's my next question. What sort of noise mitigation have you taken to dampen the awful, awful busy and loud noise coming from the I-15? Particularly, southbound in the morning, the lanes come to a frequent stop. Sometimes they don't. And in the afternoon, you're seeing southbound traffic go by at a very high speed, which is going to generate a lot of noise. It's going to go straight up in the air and impact that pool area. So any sort, I didn't know you had a sound wall in there. But if you can tell me what sort of noise mitigation measures are being used to dampen that noise from the freeway?
Well, we have two options. As you can see up here at the top, we have sound baffles, which are the slats. That is also going to help mitigate. And we can, we're also looking at the fact of a glass wall, similar to what you would see in San Clemente. When you're up against the freeway and you see all the houses up against the freeway, you see the, the glass sound barrier walls. We're not going to be able to mitigate 100% of the, the road noise. We're just going to, it's the best we can do. I mean, other than, you know, put it in a glass box.
Well, you could move the pool to a different location.
Well, once again.
I mean, that's an option.
And that was, it's a very good option, I must say. We did look at those options. And it just, it, it wouldn't work. Again, if we go back to, what slide is that?
Well, I don't want to beat this one to death.
No, I understand.
But I, I will say this. We are interested in promoting Temecula and making sure that we do everything we can to provide the best experience we can to all visitors. And we put a brand new hotel, if we put a brand new hotel in town, the last thing in the world I think we want to see is a bunch of social media reviews going out like, "Don't bother going there, the pool's in the shade all day. It's very windy and it's very noisy." And then that's going to probably, that could potentially affect your business as far as the people coming or not. Because a lot of people, especially that come to Temecula in the warmer months, are going to want to probably go out to the pool. August, the average temperature is 99 degrees in town. So.
So it's going to be kind of a nice area to get, shall we say, if that pool is in shade. And, and we're 118 degrees, that's going to be a great place to be, is in the shade and in the pool.
Can't hear anybody next to you though, because the traffic from the, the noise from the freeway would be pretty overwhelming. If you don't believe me, go stand in the parking garage.
Sir, I, I.
Let's stick to questions.
I live right across the freeway from the 15. So I understand. I can hear, I can hear city music from Old Town at my house on Yonex. So when the wind travels, it transmits all the noise to the east. You know, so trust me, I, I'm fully aware of the noise factor.
Let's stick to questions and move on.
Those are the points that I wanted to illustrate. Thanks, Ross.
Sure.
Commissioner Solis?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I, I believe this is a, it's a great location for a hotel. I just feel that this hotel design needs, needs a lot of work. That I, I think you guys will, could, could revise the design, for example.
Okay, let's stick to questions.
Oh, questions, I'm sorry. One of the questions was, there's a, there's a mechanical unit that's located on the landscape plan? That's on the third, that's on the third floor? It's on the plans? Is that where you're proposing to put mechanical units, which are right off the main street?
No, I, no.
Says it on the plans?
I don't recall we had a mechanical room on the main street.
We have no mechanical rooms on main street.
On the landscape plan?
We have nothing on main street at all. First street or second street?
Well, I mean, on the primary, the primary street. On your landscape plan, it shows equipment area.
Landscape plan?
Yeah, there's a landscape plan on your plans. It says where the garden, where the wedding garden is, there's a corner and it's calling for equipment area. So I, I don't know what kind of.
Right here?
That's my question.
Oh, that was the, mistle. I mean, we don't have anything there. The, we, we are putting all the swimming equipments and mechanical, the equipments under the level two.
Okay.
The architectural plan doesn't show anything.
Oh, yeah.
It was old one.
That's an old.
That's typo?
That was an, that was an old.
Okay. Another thing, a question is, so you, you're mentioning, mentioning that you're going to have 137 EV parkings?
Yes.
Was there a traffic study that was done to show how the, all these people are going to be coming in and out like a, for charging?
Standard parking procedures is in, in the front door and out the back. And the parking spots are going to be located according to the design for the EV chargers.
It is, the number of the EV parking is all per category in code.
Okay. Another question I have is, is there a reason why you're, you're designing off of the primary facade, like the staircases?
Oh, you're talking about the front street of the stairs that we have?
Yeah.
Just right here.
I mean, for, for the exiting purpose of it in the building code wise, you, you, you have to have stairs to serving so many occupants here and there. And it has to be apart quite a bit and has to be accessible from the street as well. So that the stair is always facing to the street side of it. As a reason why we have one stair on the first street side. And the other one on the second street side. And we do have another one on the fire lane side of it as well. And we got to have one on the front street side of it. That's what the location was for.
Okay. And then my last question is, have you, or what's the thought process about having the main lobby of the hotel in the center of the building as opposed to the primary street?
Well, for us, that registration at these days is not the traditional thinking of the hotel registration anymore. You know, all the youngsters, whoever check in and check out of the hotel, they just do with a cell phones. And key drop off anywhere that you want. So the hotel, the registration location wasn't that, any of, that has to be on someplace. But we thought, most of the, the hotel guests coming from the, from the, you know, riding a car. So we created the car entrance portion as a main of the hotel. But we'd like to, to, you know, to draw the pedestrian attraction from the front street of it. That was the reason why we created that lounge, banquet lounge and big restaurant. And with a nice arcade look of inside. So people just goes in, just, you know, kind of naturally comes into the hotel registration area. And that's what that process was.
Okay. I have one more question, sorry. For the, when you explained the mechanical area, you showed mini splits.
Yes.
So in that system, does that mean there's going to be 300 and something mini splits on the ceiling? Or where do they, where does the actual roof?
So mini split, that the fan coil unit is going to be that rectangular, the box, right on the, in between the, the gas room and the bathroom. That's the actual size of the fan coil unit. The fan coil unit is going to be each individual gas room. And it is all controlled by condensing unit on the roof. That one condensing unit is going to control five fan coils of it. We have a five stories of a gas room tower. So one of the condensing unit on top will control five gas rooms on the same tier. And each gas, answer your, the question that each gas room will have one of that fan coil unit on the ceiling.
Okay, so there's going to be almost like 70 fan, 70 equipments on the, on the roof?
Sure. That's what we have shown on the roof plan.
Okay. Cause I saw just the solar panels, but, okay, I think that's it.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we're going to go on to our speakers. And if you'd like to call the first one.
Yes, our first speaker is Rebecca Farmbeck.
Welcome, Rebecca.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to be here, happy to have the opportunity to speak. So hello, commissioners, city staff. And gentlemen, your proposal is a very nice looking proposal. I'm so glad that I got to give my comments after seeing the proposal. Because, can I tell you the truth? The Historical Society knew nothing about this project until I read it on Patch on Friday of last week. Okay? Message delivered? I don't know, I don't know how we're supposed to know about everything. Are we supposed to like follow, maybe we are, follow every single agenda for every single commission and council meeting? How do we find out about these things? You know what my reaction was when I first read the patch and saw the one picture? It's like, oh no, the Truax Hotel is coming again. And, and now it's going to be seven stories. Well, it took me a bit, but I finally figured out it wasn't at that same location. At least it was at the south end of Old Town. And it looks like probably it's not going to just totally be a wall from curb to curb that blocked off the view of everything. But you know what would have been really nice in the presentation? If we had had a picture of the virtual hotel renderings against the landscape and mountainscape of the background. Because that would really show the impact that that building would have upon the appearance of Old Town Temecula. So that, that's one suggestion. Okay. I told you I've, I found out about this on Patch. And so for the first 24 hours, I was monitoring some of the buzz on social media to see what people were saying about this project. Because it appeared to me that it was a news flash to them too. And I noticed that 18 out of 20 of the comments by the people were negative on the project. And basically, it was too big, too close to Old Town. Now, there were two positive comments. And one was sarcastic. It said, it should be even taller, it should be 17 stories high. And then I, I noticed that there was a comment that maybe we need a little bit more transparency. I don't know if there's truth, you never know what you read on social media. It said that our city manager's wife is on the hotel board. I don't know if that has any truth at all. But if so, we would need transparency on that issue. The other thing that I heard tonight that is a little concerning is in the staff presentation, it, it was mentioned that the specific plan was made in 2010. And that at that time, it okayed an eight story, did I get that right? An eight story height?
The ordinance was passed in 2010, correct?
But see, here's the deal. The Old Town specific plan has been revised nine times. And I happen to remember that when we were protesting the Truax Hotel, that at that time, the limit was four stories. And Dick Fox questioned, from the Historical Society questioned, how do you get the extra stories? stories? And he was told, and you can go back and watch that video, we're borrowing that space from areas of sidewalk and street that will never be built upon. So just think we need a little bit of clarification, a little bit of, um, you know, transparency. Maybe the people will get behind things better if we can have more conversations. And that concludes my comments and I thank you very much.
Thank you Rebecca. Next.
Wendy Lasowski.
Welcome Wendy.
Hi Bob, thank you. I'm also with the Historical Society and I also was aghast to find out about this on Friday, the same time and of course it buzzed through the Historical Society. I'm concerned that we're losing Old Town in Old Town. This project does not belong in Old Town, it should be south of Santiago. If it's gonna be there, it needs to be south of Santiago. Is this a precedent that we're now starting hotel housing in Old Town? Is this just gonna be Hotel Row? The specific plan needs to be looked at again. If this is what you are gonna start considering for Old Town, what is the Historical Society here for? We wanna save the history of Old Town. This is not the history of Old Town. This does not belong in Old Town. Thank you.
The next speaker, Richard Beck.
Good evening everyone. I uh, my family, we have a interest in Old Town. We have purchased and bought ten years ago the historic Hotel Temecula. Our family at our own personal expense paid for all the restoration and 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 getting the history all put back together there. We also own the Penfold Plaza, Penfold Building One. So we have a stake here in Old Town. My concerns, like Rebecca, include it would be nice if there was something. I believe that we're gonna lose the view of Palomar Mountain. That that's a view that's been in Old Town from the time Old Town was formed in the very beginning. That's a huge thing to take away. That's my concern. Maybe they can address that with uh, take and do a, she suggested maybe an overlay showing the the mountains and showing the hotel in in that. The other thing is, and I brought this up with the TruX Hotel at the time, is the size, the mass. Most of the historic buildings in Old Town are rather small. I understand things are are getting bigger, you know, over time, but it's just massive. It's huge. And I think it's it it's, there's no transition between Old Town and the hotel. You know, if it's allowed to a higher height because of of the zoning there for a hotel, there's no kind of a transition going directly from Old Town with four story height limit to there. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Ed Duell.
Welcome.
Hello, Commissioner. Ed Duell, a resident of Old Town since nineteen ninety nine and the developer of the Temecula Stage Stop at Sixth and Front and uh, the first uh, the first project that was ever approved by the Old Town uh, specific plan was the Temecula Stage Stop in consideration and working with the Temecula uh, uh, city on the Sixth Street parking lot. This particular project, yes, it's been around. And looking at it, I don't really have a big problem with it, but my, except for, we're looking at the southeast corner of Second and Old Town Front Street. Now, that hasn't been put up on the uh, on any of the renderings or whatever, but you've got the roadway hotel, the pink roadway hotel. You got a half a million dollar investment there and then you've got this gigantic hotel that's a half a billion dollars to put together. And I've I've made my uh, my concerns before on this project and I would like to see something that would be compatible to uh, to Old Town, but the roadway hotel versus a multi-five-star hotel gives me a little hiccups. And that's, that's my itch. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will close the public hearing and um, we are ready for discussion. I will just ask Scott a question here.
I'm so sorry, um, we need to give the applicant opportunity to do a rebuttal to the public comments.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. So open up the public hearing if you'd like to address any of the issues that were brought up and then I'll ask Scott to say a few things too.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming here and voicing their opinions and concerns about this hotel. The hotel didn't just come about based on the size. Mr. Kim came to the city of Temecula back in two thousand and twenty-three, looking to present a project in this area. He met with Christine Damco to talk about this area and he was concerned was he wanted to bring a hotel. Christine Damco then made the pitch of this spot down here on First and Front, the empty lot. That would have been a perfect hotel location, zoned per specific plan, eight stories, a hundred foot tall. There was no rebuttal, no saying no, can't build it, per specific plan, stately, clearly states, hundred feet tall. Given the space and the size of that uh, lot, we maximized the every bit of it that we could. In doing so, we looked at all options on how to make this hotel work based on the information that we were given. We were then met with the city and the city was all in favor of us to develop a concept, which we showed you the concept, the original concept. And then many months and into a year, we've actually mitigated and considered and acquiesced to the city's request. Barring the only thing that's really truly at contention with everybody is a swimming pool location. Five-star hotels doesn't necessarily have to have a swimming pool. If it got down to the point where Mr. Kim, if that was gonna be the the holdup, Mr. Kim would probably just say, don't build the hotel. Excuse me, don't build the swimming pool. But part of the amenities in this Southern California area, granted, no matter what, you go to Pachanga, go to Pachanga Swimming Pool. There's areas that swimming pool, they're also in the shade. Can't help it. Go to Morongo, swimming pool's in the shade too. It's on the backside of the hotel. What I'm seeing is people adapt to the conditions of where the swimming pool is located. The noise issue is, I have a problem with the noise in my house. I come over here and complain about the noise from the the music. Does it get me to, does it stop anybody from playing music? No. You hear my voice, that's all we're doing. I make a comment and we move on. What I'm trying to say to you is we want to build whatever is allowable per code. The city standards calls for a hotel zone, which is, granted, was designed in two thousand and ten, but has never been changed or challenged since now. Now all of a sudden, when somebody really does have the money and the affordability to put a ten-story or an eight-story hotel there, it's getting rebuttals to the fact it doesn't look good, we're, you know, we're gonna cause a canyon effect. We gave up twenty extra feet of building, which in the code says we have a right to build ten feet from the property line. On Second Street, we bumped that to twenty feet. On the front of the building, we pushed it back so we could get more articulation in this building. Everything that the planning department has asked for, everything the public commissioner's has asked for, we have done to the best of our ability. Granted, the fact is, I can't control what the book says. We're going by the book guidelines. We all should go by the book guidelines. If the book says you're allowed to build a eight-story, one hundred foot tall building in that space, I have the right to do so. Unless somebody decides otherwise, that is inappropriate. But we've done everything that this council and this commission has asked for. You know, we've given clear stories on ceilings heights that weren't necessarily needed, but we showed and provided. You know, the thing that we need to look at is life safety factors. Does it provide safety, shelter and security? It does, it provides everything. Does it provide what it was asked for as far as articulation? Following the five guideline choices in the bill, in the book, it says, choose a design. We could have gone Spanish, we didn't. We could have gone medieval, we could, we didn't. Mid-modern, we didn't. We didn't go mercantile, we didn't. We went with neoclassical design. Neoclassical design is a timeless look and it's part of the guidelines. We're not always going to agree on a location of certain items. If that was the case, then we should have all studied this specific plan when I was a commissioner on the Old Town specific plan and decided at that point in time, let's go put a pole out there and see what a hundred feet looks like. That's when we should have done this changes. Now, in regards to the TruX Hotel, I was also on that board and I was also part of that development team. That changes took out and carved out, if you were to look at the original overlay system that you had here, sidewalks were included in that hundred-foot overlay for the hundred, for the hotel overlay. So what they did is they legitimately carved it out, spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars for an EIR study to allow this to prove that what the city did at that time was reasonable and acceptable to build that building and change that area from a four-story to a eight-story, hundred-foot allowance hotel zone. Lot of money was spent to get to where they were. Believe me, pain and suffering was felt all over the place when I was working for Mr. TruX. But the point is that we did what was asked. And the same thing here, we did what was asked. We showed proof how the swimming pool would affect being in front, how it affected, it it's on the third floor. A wedding venue is going to generate, a typical wedding in Old Town Temecula is two to three years waiting list. An average wedding in Old Town Temecula, anywhere from seventy to a hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of income. A hotel of three hundred and fifty-five rooms in Old Town will generate over ten million dollars worth of revenue to the city of Temecula in TOT. That's a lot of money that's gonna be influx into the city of Temecula. Granted, it's not the, you know, it's not the money. It's the right to build what was proposed to build. Whether you and I disagree with it, it's fine, we understand. I understand theirs. Rebecca Farmworth, I remembered her when we were doing the TruX Hotel, tearing down the Butterfield Stage. If everybody remembers Temecula, uh, the Butterfield Stage was a building built by Mr. Morse. God rest his soul, loved the place, but it was contaminated with Korea sold. There was cancer problems in there, people were getting cancer from that building. It's, it wasn't a historical building, it wasn't built in the eighteen hundreds, it was built in nineteen sixty-nine. So there was no historical value to it. What Mr. TruX tried to do in that building was to create a difference. What we are trying to do on this building is the same thing. We are following the guidelines that were presented us by planning department, by everybody. We, this is our second meeting coming in front of you, we did what you asked. We feel that we have accomplished what was asked upon us. Now, I may be wrong, may be right, but we did to the best of our ability. I wouldn't have put my hat, I wouldn't have hung my hat on a project like this if I didn't believe that it was viable to the area, that it is going to make a statement. Granted, it's gonna make a big statement, but it's not my fault, it's not your fault, it's not the city's fault. The specific plans allowed this to happen. You weren't here, I wasn't here when that document was made. All I can say is, we have this to deal with. Now, if that works as my rebuttal, I hope so. We've done everything in our power and we continue to wanna work with the city. And again, as we said, Mr. Kim spoke and met with the city and they all agreed that this was gonna be a great location for a hotel. Now, since you actually see a physical picture of it, you go, oh my God, it's too big. Well, yeah, it's a hundred feet, ninety-one feet up in the air. So is City Hall. TruX building is sixty-nine feet tall. We have documentation to show that, how that all fits into this area. So, and to say that we're gonna lose the view of the Palomar Mountains, we have a rendering that was produced from the last meeting that we had, if everybody can remember that, we showed the presentation of that rendering. The video is in the archives somewhere. We didn't realize that we would have to bring that to reiterate what Ms. Farmbarck was asking for, how it's gonna affect the building, what's gonna look like when you drive down the road and you see the roadway in here and our building there. We didn't realize we had to bring that. Had we known that we had to bring it, we would have brought it. Or we would have asked staff to throw it up. If you still want, I could still ask staff if they could kindly bring that rendering up if he has it and we can kindly show the public what the, what it looks like. That's, I don't know what more to say to you. And uh, yeah, I, I, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I hope I answered and rebuttled appropriately.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Scott, if you could just bring up the overlay, um, just to clarify one thing here. Okay, so just to clarify, the only place that a building over four stories is allowed is in within that circle, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this type of building cannot be built anywhere else in Old Town?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that, that's not something that's that's uh, can happen unless we change the specific plan, which is a whole process, which I was not on this commission, but I was here on a commission in two thousand and ten when it was, it was passed and I will tell you, there was a lot of involvement in our community regarding all the planning that went on and there always has been, everything that we do, it's, it gets exhaustive because of the amount of input that we that we get. So, um, anyway, there's, that's not our job here tonight to decide what the specific plan is, it's our job here tonight to decide whether this fits the specific plan as written. So with that, I will start with Commissioner Turley Trejo and go ahead and.
Yeah, I I wanted to start because, um, sorry, Gary Watson, I were on the subcommittee for, we were on the Old Town Temecula Subcommittee for this and so I didn't have any questions for the applicant just because we've talked about this a lot. First thing I do wanna say is I'm appreciative of the Old Town Local Advisory Committee. I see some of you here and I appreciate you being here. You weren't, we didn't have that committee before all this happened and that might be why there wasn't a lot of information specifically. before all this happened, and that might be why there wasn't a lot of information specifically to that committee. But I do think in the future that will definitely happen. And we are very excited about having that committee and having the feedback and that diversity and variety of people that are on that committee. So thank you, those that have been here tonight and are, this is great. We have people at our meeting. Don't usually have anybody here. So it's great to have you guys take the time to come out here and speak. And I know Scott kind of went through a history, but I wanted to kind of share that with my colleagues, since this is our discussion time as colleagues, with our history as a subcommittee with this. So I hope that everyone will listen, as far as all of our colleagues. So starting out, there was a subcommittee with the City Council, correct, on July twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two? And I think their biggest concern was the canyon effect along Second Street and the location of the pool on the western, on the eastern and not the western side of the building and the mass, the massing of the building. As they met again, those were the same concerns. On October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, some of our concerns, Fernando, were the massing of the building, the lack of building articulation along the streets, the location of the pool adjacent to the freeway. And this, probably the most important, the outside of the building was to be right and fit in Old Town. And that the project should not move forward to Planning Commission unless every development standard in the specific plan had been met. Well, the applicant came to the Planning Commission before those things had been met. They came on September sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and we voted to recommend to have a redesign of the project. On January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, we also met again as a subcommittee, Gary and I. And while we felt like there had been some improvement, we felt like the project had not gone far enough with the standards and guidelines. On March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, which was just a couple of months ago now, we met. And at that time, and discussed the Architectural Design Guideline that Scott explained, and I want to reread that here in just a minute, that the building form and how it pertains to the proposed project and to Old Town. And we also asked that each of our commissioners have one-on-one meetings or two-on-one meetings with staff regarding that. So that's kind of the history then. The Old Town Specific Plan Design Standards. The standards are intended to ensure that proposed development within the Old Town area occurs in a manner that is consistent with the community's vision for building form, massing, architectural character, and the building's relationship to the street and public realm. All proposed development projects shall be designed in compliance with those standards. So we, you know, we made that recommendation for a redesign because of that. And going to the Architectural Design Guideline, which is on page seven, if my colleagues are looking. Page B nineteen of the Old Town Specific Plan Details in Architectural Design Guideline Variety on Street Edges Was Created Through the Use of Various Frontage Types. Future buildings in Old Town are encouraged to reinforce this historic pattern through the use of simple and clear building massing. Building facades that exceed fifty linear feet, which obviously this does, should incorporate varying architectural expression, character, and roof lines so as to appear to be of various smaller facades. Okay. So, and then the last thing that we've talked a lot about tonight is the pool area. And I know Mr., and he said his name is not Mr. Kim, Mr. Keel? Okay, Mr. Keel was saying that the comment from the Planning Commission was that the location is okay. At that meeting, I think maybe one of our planning commissioners might have said that, but that was not okay too. But that was not a general consensus to that location being okay. There's been a lot of talk about that. And one of the reasons for that pool location not being okay, and that has to do with the specific plan, is that it doesn't engage with Old Town or the streetscape environment. It's not anywhere near the streetscape. And so it's a direct conflict with the goals of the specific plan to engage and enliven the streetscape. That's on the pool. Also, I want to say that as a, as a planning commission, we have the discretion as a planning commission to look at this application separately than the staff does. And I want to say that I don't agree with the staff, that the applicant has technically met all of the standards and guidelines. I don't think that the applicant has done enough to satisfy what the guidelines call for. The building itself with the fifty-feet compliance, and it's not done enough with this on the setbacks of giving that appearance of, you know, what we're talking about here, of having various smaller facades. We don't see that at all. And it's supposed to be these facades that are built over time and kind of a scale with Old Town. And the third thing is that it's out of character and out of scale. It doesn't fit within Old Town. Mr. Keel talked about being that it was okay to have one dominant volume. That's exactly what it feels like, one dominant volume. And in my thoughts, that is not okay for what we have in Old Town here. The historical part of it is so important. I understand that it's been zoned for an eight-story building. Doesn't mean it needs to look like this. And I don't think that enough has been done at this time. And I just want to say very clearly to my colleagues that we have the discretion as a planning commission to deny this application. We do not have to agree with staff. So I want to make sure everyone's clear on that. We have that discretion. And I just wanted to give that history as a subcommittee, since we've been meeting on this quite a bit and have had a lot of history with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Watts, do you like to go next?
Actually, I'd like to, I'd like to hold up.
Okay, Commissioner Solis.
Sure. Okay, I just want to thank you for that history. There's a lot of information. And I think that this is a great location for a hotel, but as it stands today, architecturally, I think there needs to be some major modifications for the layout and the facades, how the facades interact with the primary streets, maybe also pedestrian level. There's still some unclear details, like do all the balconies, are all balconies usable, or is the railing false? I mean, is there a false railing? I think that's, that's a question. I also don't believe the applicant has modified the designs to address some of the, the city, the city comments that we've had, also the subcommittees, or the Planning Commission's comments that, that we had at the previous meeting. So my concerns are that there's not enough articulation along the facade. A three-foot setback, I don't believe is enough. I think before you had a two, and now you have a three. I don't believe that that meets that, that addresses that. I don't think that three feet addresses our comments on articulation. I think needs to be, something, something more has to happen architecturally. It does look very large, so that's where the articulation comes in, where I believe it needs to be designed differently. Also, the layout of the lobby, the location, should be along the primary street. I don't think the lobby should be tucked way in the back where you can't even find it. And also, the pool location, I don't believe that's a good location for a pool. You're about less than a hundred feet from the freeway. Now, you say that you can do a sound barrier. I don't think any baffles or glass or anything will, will break up the sound of a freeway when you're outside. But overall, I, I think the applicant may go back and design, I believe the applicant can go back and design a new project, but but addressing our comments, not just putting a, an, you could say, like a, like a small front entrance or balconies, I don't think that addresses our comments. Or, or setting back the facade one foot. Before it was two, now it's three. I don't think that addresses any of our comments that we had before. And the pool, you didn't do, you didn't even do anything for the pool. That was our main comment too. And there's so many different ways that this could be designed to meet the Planning Commission's comments that we had before, and also meet the city policies and the goals of how the design should be. So I, I believe that we could ask the applicant to go back, but if it looks the same as the way it does, then I think staff should work with them until they, they bring a new design before the Planning Commission. But overall, I think you should go back to the applicant. That's it.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Thank you. Thank you guys for the comments. I'm going to respectfully disagree on, on, on a few of the things. I think the pool obviously is, is an issue, and we've kind of beat that up quite a bit. But if I look historically at the progress of plans from day one to where plans are today, I, I do trust staff and appreciate the work that they've put into it. I have seen a major change within that. The size is big. We, we know that. But, but there's one rendering in, in here that shows Interstate fifteen perspective view. It's on page twenty, showing it next to the TruX Building. And I'm sure at one point that building was looked at as huge, and I'm sure at one point this building was looked at as huge. I think if this was a block north, it wouldn't be right. But I think as an anchor part to the southern part of Old Town, this provides something that we don't have available to us. I don't think we've discussed quite enough yet the economic impact that this has and what, what this could bring into Old Town, into Temecula. I think a lot of those benefits are there. I wish it was perfectly done. I'd still love to see the, the balconies, you know, feasible, where you could step out on the balconies, at least on a portion of those. I think that would be really important. Still question the yoga spot, the gym spot. That still seems a little funky to me, and if that's something we could work with, I'd be willing to work with that. But understanding the work that staff has put in with the applicant, seeing that everything that has been addressed, at least recently, it took some time to get there, but I feel like the applicant has brought it forward and has accomplished what they're, what they were asked to do. I, I think there's benefit to the project. I really do. So for, for me, having considered all that, if there were, you know, maybe some modifications to the patio, maybe, or balconies and to the layout, you know, I would, I would be much more in favor of taking staff's recommendation for approval.
Did you want to go or you don't want to go?
Sure. Yeah, fourteen, fourteen years ago, I guess, I was on the Old Town Local Review Board when the overlay was approved. If I remember correctly, there was a, there was a big, not a big, but a, a general consensus or a feeling that there was a need for something that big in Old Town. It was hard to believe what fourteen years does in this town, the changes. Anyhow, at that time, I think city leadership really wanted to see something like this go in. And I don't know if that's always remained the same, but that's the way the specific plan was amended at the time, and that's the one we have to live with. Speaking to both my colleagues, at least Fernando and Laney, I, I tend to agree with everything you're saying. I realize that the staff report says that the applicant has reached out and tried to respond to our concerns and incorporated the changes that we've all discussed tonight. But like Mr. Solis has said, you know, the articulation, I don't think it's enough. I know that the staff may think it's enough, but I think it needs to be more to really highlight the difference there. So you went from two to three and four in some places, but I think it'd go even more. I don't think it's sufficient enough on the articulation, and that doesn't help with the, for lack of a better word, the appearance of a building that may look like a prison cell block without some definition to make it look like a good hotel, which I know the attempt is there and the effort is there to try to do that. I don't think that the applicant has responded in a way that would adequately address all the concerns we've had. I think that, I don't know if it's true or not, but it's been my impression that the efforts put forth have been minimal and just to meet the bare requirement. And, you know, to be very frank, we're not used to that here in Temecula. We're used to real quality people that want to build something. They usually come in and have no problem responding to, for lack of a better way, the Temecula way. So this is a tough one. It really is for me because I know what the staff report says. And I know that we've had concerns, ongoing concerns on this project for a long time, being on the subcommittee, and hoping all along that we could come to a, a reasonable solution that would meet everybody's needs. It's, it's tough, and I agree that the, the hotel is very big. It's going to be a huge impact on the viewscape here. It's going to completely dominate the scene from our arch. I don't think people even notice the arch when they drive under it, when the hotel is so big there. But and I understand Adam's concerns too. I certainly do. I think that there's more improvements that could be made. As I said before, I think that the applicant could maybe stretch it even further if they wanted to work with our staff to try to meet the concerns that we've all voiced, and the council has voiced as well. So you know, the pool, I know that there's nothing in there that says we have to ask you to move the pool, but I think everybody agrees it's in the wrong place. It is in the wrong place. I don't know if too many people would say it is. So I would encourage you to, you know, sit down and talk about that and see if there's a way to make that better. I know it's not going to be for me a deci, the deciding factor. But everything else involved, I just don't think has gone far enough. So, you know, without beating that to death, those are, those are basically my, my thoughts.
Thank you. I'm more in line with Commissioner Ruiz. I'm probably the one you quoted saying that I was okay with the pool. I wouldn't quite put it that way, but what I, what I will say about the pool is that I've thought a lot about the pool and the event wedding venue. One of the aspects they had before, the elements you had before, was them next to each other, and both of them on the side facing the mountain. I thought that would be a very bad decision because I would agree with what Ross's statement was. Nobody wants to have a wedding that is being irritated by people and kids splashing at a pool. And not to just mention weddings, but other kinds of venues. If I was also sitting in a pool and you were to have music playing either at a wedding or something else, I wouldn't necessarily want to be listening to that at the pool. So I thought, you know, one's got to go on one side, and one's got to go on the other side. Which would be the better? And I, I come to the conclusion that I'd rather see the pool on the side towards the freeway and the, the event venue facing the mountains. That's where I think people are going to be paying attention to the scenery. I think you're sitting in a pool, you're either reading a book, you're swimming, or you're taking a nap from a heavy dinner you had at one of the hotels last night or a few drinks that you might have had down the road. I also disagree with putting the lobby in the front. I think the lobby belongs where the cars are coming in. I think that's where the primary people that are going to be coming in are going to be registering at that desk. I, when we all stayed at a hotel in Long Beach, and the parking garage is where we all came in, and the walk to the lobby was a very long walk with bags and everything. I, I just thought that was really a poor, poor design, particularly since I could have checked in. All I had to do was pick up my key and go to, go to my room. The articulation, I do have some concerns about. I'd like to see, you know, instead of being two to three, I'd love to see it being three to four. You know, I, I just think that articulation, a better articulation would reduce the presence of that, that building. It would appear more. It would appear more as a number of different, different buildings. And, uh, I think that would be something that would be great. Other than that, I don't have any other, any other real comments at this point, so, uh, when I respond to anybody?
Yeah, so, so just a question from my colleagues, and I mean this with, with the utmost respect. I think one of the things overall that I've heard through the years is Temecula's ability to work with businesses as, as they're coming through. So, with the, with the list that was provided to this applicant, if they have satisfied that list, and there's, appears there may be a recommendation for, you know, a redesign, wh- where do we, where does that expand on to? And I'm, and I'm just trying to put my head on as if I was coming to town trying to develop a, a business or develop a project, and said, "Tell me what you want me to do," and I've done that, and you still say no. What, what am I supposed to do?
Um, I'll respond to that. I think Gary kind of said it well, you know, as a subcommittee, we've been working with the applicant, and we've been working with the staff. And it, it hasn't, it has been felt very, the minimum of what needed to be done is gonna be done just to get this through. That's what it's felt like. And, you know, and, and looking at the actual project itself, that's what it feels like. And so I think that, um, I understand what you're saying, and I do think that there have definitely been some improvements, for sure. I just don't think that there's been enough to satisfy what we're really, um, what, what even says in the specific plan of the, of the different facades and feeling like it's a different building, it still feels like one big building. And I think that's the main thing for me, is that that, that not enough has been done for that. And we have in the, let's see, where is it? In the actual resolution, which is at the end of this, um, and, and number A, it says hotels are an allowable use within the downtown core zoning district of the Old Town specific plan. Therefore, the use will be consistent with the general plan for Temecula and the Old Town specific plan as well as the requirements for state law and other ordinances of the city. So that's, I, I have to agree with that to vote yes on this. And I don't, I don't think that this, I don't think that what they have done is enough to satisfy these guidelines and standards that are in here in the Old Town specific plan, period. I don't think that enough has been done. Yes, they've done some, but I don't think that enough has been done. And, and besides that, you know, I think that with Old Town itself, there's, there's such a historical quality with it, and I think that whatever goes in that lot has to be able to fit with Old Town. I don't think that this design fits with Old Town. And I think that, for me, that's the main reason that I would, that I would vote against this.
Okay, I, I would just say, I, I, I think there was a massive amount of changes made to the inside of the building to accommodate a lot of the things that were changed, so, um, so I semi-disagree, agree with the statement that it, it was done minimally. Um, if you look at all the changes inside, it was, it was quite a bit done. Um, my question to our attorney, hello, is that, um, could we vote yes to pass this with various conditions that we set?
Yeah, you could always condition the project if you, um, however you wish to, can, so yes, you could do that.
So, my question to, to all of us is, can we come up with a set of conditions that we're willing to agree to and with a yes vote? Or is this gonna be, are you going for a deny vote?
I think at this point, setting conditions is when you set minimum cha, minimal changes. Like you need to add more trees along the street, you need to add more parking where there's really isn't, where there isn't a lot of, you could say facade changes, a big change in the project. So I don't think we're in the position, and I don't think I can support approving this project as is with conditions, 'cause there's gonna be like twenty of them. And with those twenty, it's gonna change the entire design of the project. So it's not gonna be consistent to what was presented to us. I, uh, I would like to, um, make a motion to, to, to have the, make a motion to have the applicant move the pool at a different location and to come up with a design that will articulate all facades. And to come back to the planning commission to show us a new design that just makes those two small changes. To move the pool location and to provide more articulation so the building doesn't look like a straight seven-foot, I mean, seven-story building, straight from the bottom to the top.
I don't think that that's what we're voting on, though, tonight.
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to get to that, so, I'm just trying to get the feel of what, where we're at here, so, go ahead.
Well, I made a motion
Yeah.
For the applic, for the applicant to redesign the pool, to move it to a, to a different location, and also to articulate the building along the facades. Those are just my, that's my motion right now.
Can you hold that motion so we, I just get Gary's input here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just
I thought, I thought
That's right, go ahead, I just wanna get his
How would you, um, sorry. How would you, um, go forward with the project? Are you saying if you do these two things, we're approving the project?
No, no, my motion is for the applicant to, to present a new project, a new design that shows a new location of the pool and to articulate the building.
So that's kind of a denial?
No, not a denial. I don't, I don't wanna deny the project. I want it to go back to staff and to the applicant to redesign the pool location and to provide us more articulation. And I want the applicant to come back to the planning commission and show us a new design.
So the motion would be similar to what happened in the last meeting?
Correct.
To redesign?
Redesign, but very clearly redesign with the pool moving from that location. That's like, so if it doesn't, so if the pool does not move from that location to a new location, then it can come back to the planning commission?
Okay, so the pool redesign, then you said articulation, so I'm gonna need a little more, um, detail there. Now, is it articulate the building facades in accordance with the fifty-foot guidelines that are established to create different facades every fifty feet?
That's exactly what I would want.
Okay.
And it, and it could even, it doesn't even have to be fifty feet, it could be forty feet. But at a bare minimum, fifty feet, it needs to be either set back completely, ten feet, twenty feet, or some type of design, because as of right now, it looks like a big wall. From the bottom all the way to the top, seven stories. So maybe the third story can be set back, maybe the second story could be set back, I don't know. The, the architect needs to design something that meets that one element of the downtown core hotel overlay district. That rule that says, or not rule, I could say guideline, that says, um, "Building facades shall be articulated with wall offsets, recesses, openings, and color, material, textures, and so on." So that's my motion, my motion, I do not want to deny the project. I think it's a great hotel location, I just want the applicant to go back, relocate the pool, and meet this articulation with fifteen feet, not by two feet, not by three feet, more than that, and to come back to the planning commission. So I'm, I, I will, I want this project to move forward, but I feel like we need to see it again in a different design.
Can I ask one question? Would there be an option from the planning commission for the applicant to remove the pool? And it just be a flat deck along the freeway? There's no, there's no requirement in the SP to have a pool. You may have a pool, but you're not required to have a pool.
Well, for me to support an eight-story building, one of the elements and one of the guidelines on here is for a pool and spa facility. So, if you want the eight feet, I mean, if you want the eight stories, then we need a pool. If not, we can bring it down to four, which is permitted, right? So, I'm just going off of the overlay from the staff report, just trying to follow the rules. That's it. That's my motion.
So the exact layout, I just wanna be clear, because I don't wanna come back again?
No, I don't want the project to come forward
Okay.
unless the pool is moved to a different location.
So
Okay.
That's my motion.
Okay, any other comments, do we have a second?
Um, Maricela, I question, um, it sounds like he's proposing a continuance or a
So, he's, he's propos, what I'm hearing is, um, to essentially take, continue it off calendar to allow the project to come, the project applicant to come back with a redesign that meets those specific conditions. I think we have some options here, I think we would probably, and I, and I have not heard yet that we have three votes to support approving this project tonight. So I think it, I think we need to bring the applicant back up to answer the question of whether or not they want a denial tonight, or whether or not they want to redesign. Because if they want to just have it denied and, you know, have that appeal to the city council, they can certainly do that. Or like we did last time, they didn't want, they didn't wanna do that, they wanted to try to redesign. I think we need to give them the opportunity to answer that question.
Okay, so it sounds like we have three choices then?
Two, two
Denial?
Well, you could always approve, yes, approve.
And this third one would
Right.
Come, redesign.
Yes, allow the applicant to, to move forward with the project, I, I mean, I'm, I'm in support of the project.
No one seconded it, but I think he had a question before we, so we only have a motion right now, there is no second, but there was a pause for a question that was asked.
So do we need to go through this motion before we request
Yes.
the applicant to address us, or?
We could to see if there's enough votes, but my, my concern is if the motion passes and we don't know whether or not that's what the applicant wants.
Right, okay.
So I think we might wanna just hear from the applicant now, before we even
But, I'm sorry.
Yes.
If there's a motion, are, am I gonna, is the motion stopped? Because I think right now the motion is for the project to come back.
Correct.
Now whether the project goes back to the applicant. And during that time with staff, if the, if the, if the applicant wants to remove themselves from the project and say, "We wanna withdraw our application," they can withdraw their application. But as of right now, I would like to follow the motion.
Sure.
And I, I really don't, there's no conversation right now with the applicant, right?
You can have your motion if you want, see if there's a second, and vote on it.
I would like to do that first.
I think that makes more sense.
So let's, let's see if someone seconds my motion.
Okay, all right, do we have a second, is anyone wanting to second? Okay, since we have no second, the motion is dead.
Okay.
So
Well, can we hear from the applicant before it's dead or not?
No, he didn't want to do that, so
Okay, but it hasn't been seconded, so
No, it hasn't been seconded, so it's a dead motion.
I would like to ask you, at any point, the, the applicant has the position to withdraw from the project after we make a decision?
Yes.
Yeah, so he can either accept what the motion is, or
Right, but the, but, so what's before us is either, u- usually it's an approval or denial. You guys are sort of looking to deviate to say, "Go back and redesign." What I'm, what I'm suggesting is that ordinarily, we would do a denial motion, and then they would have an opportunity to appeal that to the city council, where the city council would consider their project as is and then decide whether or not to approve that project. What you're suggesting is go back and redesign again. I, I'm not saying that's not a viable option, I'm just saying that we should give the applicant the opportunity to weigh in on whether they wanna do that or if they wanna try to charge forward with this particular project.
I, I wouldn't wanna deny a project. That's why I'm, I'm trying to be very firm, is I wanna continue the project to another meeting.
But we didn't get a second on that motion.
We never got a second, so the motion, the motion dies.
Okay.
Okay, doesn't mean that you can't bring it up again, it's just right now it's dead. So right now, we have a discussion, I think the discussion is, is with the applicant, asking what their preference is.
No, not right now. Yeah, if there's no second, I think that motion is dead. And I, and I know, and I don't know, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, you, you asked earlier, would there be conditions of approval that everyone would be comfortable with, and I don't know that we, do we end that, or, I mean?
Well, I, I would agree that there aren't conditions that I think we can put on it for me to be able to vote on it at this time. I would say that, I would agree with Fernando on that. That it, with that question that you had
Okay.
that there's no conditions that
So if there was direction for deeper articulations, that's
I, I think I agree with him in that the conditions that would have to be made would be too, it would be too much, it would be a whole new design for this hotel, and I don't think that's possible at this point with just putting a condition on it.
Okay, Gary, um, do you have anything to add?
No, not right now.
Okay. Um, it looks like where we're at is, we have, no one wants to put forward a motion with conditions other than the one that was put forward. So we either have a motion for denial or a motion for approval.
I mean, I, I would add a condition, but it just seems like it's kind of, kind of worthless, honestly, based on the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I
I, I, I'll run with a motion if we wanna go through the process. My motion, I would, I would like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, adding the condition of approval to open up those patios.
I would, I would agree with that with one additional thing, which is to change the articulation so that it's from, rather than being from two to three feet, it'd be three to four feet.
If that's an amendment, I'll accept the amendment.
Okay, and you're, you can't, what, Gary, what's your feeling?
So do we have to make a
Was that a motion, was that a second on the motion?
No, we're not, I'm not ma, I'm just saying
They're crafting, they're crafting a motion.
We're asking whether that's something that everybody can support.
That's something I can't support.
Okay, that's fine. Gary, could you support?
Not yet.
No, okay, can you, would you be willing to add anything to that motion?
No.
So, okay.
If we start adding all, like you said, a myriad of conditions that are, that's gonna change the entire
Okay, so you see a whole bunch more as well?
Well, what I'm, where I'm being pushed into right now, I, I think I'm almost ready to make a motion to deny it.
Okay.
But not yet.
You wouldn't wanna, you know, the applicant to come up with a new design, too? So can you, can you say then?
I would love the applicant to come up and say, "We, we understand what your concerns are, we would love to go back and address those and make it right so that we could go forward," but I haven't heard that.
But can, can you make a motion then to say you would like the applicant to come back to redesign it according to that, and then we can, we can make a motion on that?
Do I have to make a motion, or can I just make a request?
You would have to make a motion.
I'm asking our attorney.
Don't tell him what he, you know, let's ask, let's ask our attorney what he can do.
So
I'm sorry.
Yes, we, we are gonna need, at the end of the day, a motion with an action here. So we can't just make the request, we need a motion so we come back with a resolution, whether that's a resolution for approval, denial, or if we're saying, "Are you okay with redesign?"
So in order to talk to them, it has to be based upon a motion, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying we can bring them up and ask about the redesign question, but it sounded like we didn't even get a second on that, so it, it seemed like a fruitless conversation. But now I'm hearing maybe more people are willing to engage in that, so perhaps we do need to hear from them.
Are we all okay with having a conversation with them?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
That was a long drawn out
Well, it's, this is
Which is very understandable, because of the situation and nature of this project, it is. However, I would like to first start out with the fact is that you did have a subcommittee meeting with the planning commissioners, the two commissioners and staff. We never heard about it, or else we would've been there, would've liked to have been there to participate and to voice our support in helping the, the design issues. When we asked the staff in regards to our articulation, well, how far do you want it, where do you want it to go? They can't tell us what to do, because that means they're stepping into the realm of being a designer. The same as your, your, your team. You cannot step into my realm and tell me that I need to be four feet or five feet, because there is no guidelines. We're willing to off, and what we thought was a reasonable offer of three feet or two feet. Whatever made the difference in the architectural style of the building, the boldness of these columns, for example, this is an architectural feature, articulation right behind you. That creates a statement. So does ours. This is only twenty-five feet. Ours is fifty. It makes a difference with, and that's two feet right there. That's what you're going to see on the building. It's roughly two feet right there. So if we go four feet, what that does to our building interior wise, we have a set standard of four hundred, roughly four hundred to four hundred and twenty-five feet, square feet per hotel room. This is not just your basic roadway in three hundred square foot room. This isn't a luxurious room that accommodates it.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think the question that was being asked was simply.
We're willing to work with you.
Would, do you want, so there seems like there's not going to be an approval tonight. So do you want a resolution of denial? Or do you want a motion where it goes back to you to redesign, where they clearly articulate, here are all the things that need to be redesigned before it comes back? So that's the options on the, on the table for discussion.
Sorry for the confusion.
Sure.
Sure, that we, we like to have, um, the motion of that redesign and comeback. But I want to clarify a few things. Seems like that we have a swimming pool location issues and building articulations. Building our articulation of making more than two feet, three feet of the recessiveness of the, the massing that we have and provide more of that articulation, sure, we'll look into it. But the one of the, uh, that, that portion that, uh, Commissioner Lorraine was, uh, the mentioning about various smaller building, the impression of the less than fifty linear feet, we cannot do that. For this, uh, look of the building, this is a neo-classic building. Neo-classic building of a different segment of the colors and different designs of the, the building on that every fifty feet, when you're talking about on the first suite, it is quite messy over there. So we want to contain as a one architectural style with enough articulation to give the look of the style. And if that's what you meant, then sure, we'll work with staff and come back with the articulation, the requirements that you have. And for the swimming pool location, what I heard tonight is that at least two commissioners were okay with the location of the swimming pool. Because of moving the swimming pool location one place to the other, it means that some other place has to be sacrificed. Which that wedding garden, the function may be sacrificed because of that. And we have to, the redesign the way, shape of the hotel tower to different way. So it is quite, you know, that impact on the design then, the articulation that we are talking about. So I do need, have a clear direction of you, from you, that what does that mean of the location, relocation of the swimming pool? That's really important for our project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I think what we, maybe what we want to do is consider a motion, go through this. I would recommend then that we have our subcommittee meet with them, with staff. I'm not sure how else we can give enough detail and information to you so that they're not keep on coming back with, you know, a presentation that we pick apart. Um, we need to be able to give them enough detail that they're able to, to either comply or.
Yeah. Uh, I just want to say something from the subcommittee perspective. We have met with them and we have met with staff and, and that was kind of the history I was trying to give you, that we have done that. We have done that over and over again. And so I'm not sure that making a motion and doing this all over again, we're going to get a different result.
That's, that's.
I think we'd have to be clear though, because in all fairness, the meetings that have been had, those changes have been met. In your guy, in your guys' words, you know, maybe not as in-depth, or I think minimal was kind of the word that you use, or the minimum request, but in all fairness, those have been met. So I, I, I would, I would fully agree that if, if this does get sent back out, we need to be crystal clear so that they don't come back, the applicant doesn't come back and say, okay, we've made these changes and then we say, well, still doesn't feel right. I think we want to redesign it again. Like, we're, we're just going in circles. So, and, and that's what I was trying to get a better understanding of earlier is when we've asked any applicant for any project to do something and they do it, whether it's the minimum or not, when we say, please do this and it's done, and then we still say no, uh, it, it's, it's hard for me to com- to comprehend that. And I'd only feel comfortable moving forward if we could be crystal clear so that they have an understanding on what it is that we're looking for. Because right now, I honestly don't know what we're looking for. We've asked them to do something, they've done it, staff has worked with them, staff's made a recommendation for an approval. I've got a couple of minor things that I'd be willing to look, look at a possible change. But to say go back to a redesign and come back. We, they've done that, and they've done that and accomplished what we've asked them to do, at least according to the staff standards.
How, uh, can I make a comment? What if we, um, how does everyone feel about the pool? Do you think the pool's in the right location? So we have?
I don't think that there's anything in the plan, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong on this, that would direct us to, uh, direct us with the placement of a pool. In other words, isn't it pretty much a discretionary decision by the applicant to put the pool wherever? Nothing that the, that the code demands that it be, I know Benson and that type of thing, but.
What I would say is that there's, there's nothing in the plan specifically for an ele- uh, an amenity like a pool. And there's other amenities at a hotel as well. It's not just a pool that aren't specifically directed to be located in certain locations. But all the amenities still have to in total comply with a specific plan in terms of its relationship to the street, its livening of the street environment, and all of the other guidelines and standards, right? So even though there's nothing specifically telling you where to put a pool or another amenity like a pool, it still needs to be placed somewhere that allows it to comply with a specific plan. And I've heard here tonight from one or two of you that the thought is, is that the location of the pool is not allowing it to actually comply with a specific plan. It is not in compliance with the finding that is needed to be made, that it is compliant with a specific plan. That particular element. So while yes, the pool is not prescribed to be located somewhere, but all amenities are prescribed to be somewhere that, uh, allows them to comply with a specific plan.
Okay, I, I, I think the applicant has heard pretty clearly from the five commissioners that they think, or at least some of us think the pool should be moved, that it doesn't meet the standard you just said, Luke. So, um, yeah, the pool and the articulation, once again. The articulation was changed from two to three. So why not two to four? It doesn't seem like there's a specific statement that says it has to be two feet, three feet. Am I?
Can I ask just a question? Because when we think of articulation, it's not, it, there's two. There's the horizontal and the vertical. And the only articulation that we seem to be talking about is the vertical articulation, right? So the in and out on a vertical plane. But what about the articulation on the horizontal plane? So I just want to throw that out there, because if we're going to get a specific direction, we need specific direction. Because if we're talking about moving it back horizontal, or vertically one foot, that's one thing. But if your thinking in your mind actually on a horizontal plane, we need to know that.
I'm, vertical plane would be my thinking, but.
Yeah.
And horizontal, I believe.
Definitely.
I would like over horizontal also.
So, like this?
Like step back, so the first story, like if, if you're walking on the street, the massing isn't, 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 isn't big. The massing. So maybe like the third story, how does everyone feel about maybe like the third story to be set back?
The third story up?
Yeah, so, so it'd be one story, two stories, and maybe the, the third story would be set back. So it can kind of match all the existing downtown feel. Or maybe the, or maybe the fourth story will be set back. So then, you know, it, it matches all the existing buildings on, on, on the main street. That's an option because the applicant hasn't done any articulation in the horizontal factor. But I believe that if we just have them relocate the pool and provide some horizontal articulation, we will receive a new project. Then maybe we can make a better decision on if we can. You know, we can't design the project for him right now. We can't tell him, oh, you need to do this. I mean, I think, I think the major, the major concern is the pool location and the horizontal articulation and the vertical articulation. And I think it's the architect's job to come up with something impressive for us to agree with. You know what? This is going to be a great hotel. It's a great location. You know, it's going to be beautiful. That's, that's our goal. Our goal is to, is to agree with the beautiful project. But I think as of right now, needs a little more.
But you don't think that the outdoor dining provides that horizontal articulation?
Well, that's only in the front, it's only for a portion of the, of the, it's not even half of the building. And the inter- and the entire other half of the building just goes all the way up. So I don't see an articulation there. And there's a lot of room. There's a lot of room. It doesn't have to be seven stories. It can get the same amount of room. If you go to this, this elevation here where the wedding venue is, you can put the fifth and, the fifth story, sixth story, seventh story, you can put it there too. There's a lot of options. It doesn't have to go all the way up, all seven stories.
So are those the only two concerns that we would like to see addressed, the pool location and the?
I, I, that's something I would like to see.
Want to try your motion again.
Okay, so then.
Hang on one second. Can I ask about the pool location? Are we suggesting swapping the, the? What are you suggesting? What, if, give them as much detail as.
To me, there's only one spot, and I don't know how this would work. I'm not, I'm not a, an, an architect or a designer. Can we go to the, the layout where the pool is shown? It is. Because I would not be in favor of swapping the pool for the wedding venue.
No, no, no. I, I wouldn't want to do that either.
So the only thing I don't know is, is if the pool could come down here to the bottom right-hand corner where the, where there's rooms and relocate those rooms. So basically you'd have the wedding venue on the top and the pool on the bottom portion.
That sounds like a good idea too.
Within that courtyard, yeah, thank you very much.
I feel like the freeway side and all the primary street sides should have a building. And then the pool should be somewhere away from the freeway.
Again, I, I don't know if that's feasible, but looking, looking at what they're trying to do, I, I think that would accomplish and not interfere with the wedding venue. To, to me, that's probably the only other location on that floor where it could work without interfering with the other wedding venue design.
There's also, you know, it can be there and it could be divided by a, a conference room. There could be a division between both of those venues. It could be a conference room. There could be so much different design that you could do. But I feel that by making the applicant or requesting the applicant to remove the pool, will completely redesign a lot of the hotel.
So I think what Luke was saying, and this is what I was trying to say earlier, is that where the pool location is now has no engagement with Old Town, which is part of the specific plan. So this would.
Yeah.
Right, this location would. So that would make a difference for me as far as that's part of the specific plan of what we're trying to accomplish.
What if the pool was on Second Street? Instead of going up and down, it's going left to right.
I think you could go there too.
Parallel with the wedding venue, you're saying?
So just take the, take the pool that you have show on here and flip-flop, turn it, turn it sideways, so it goes along Second Street. Now it has involvement or activity.
Down where the yellow is?
Yeah, so now it ha- it is engaged in the Old Town.
Yeah.
You know, people and everything. And still then there's a lot more distance between that and the wedding venue. And, you know, you now still have rooms there that are facing, um, facing the mountains.
I think either location would look great. That's a, an option the applicant can, can explore.
Just one thing there too, those that the, you had mentioned that the pool should be away from the freeway. And in the yellow area, it would be adjacent to the freeway. The far left side would be receiving a lot of, of tra- uh, of noise off the freeway.
Yeah.
Bouncing off the upper floors. So just, you had mentioned that you wanted to be away from, I just wanted to make sure that.
I feel that if it would be more in the corner, then it would meet that same. I mean, it would meet my comment. I mean, but we're not going to design the pool, but either this way or this way, and the applicant has to become creative.
Can we speak in regards to this or?
Hang on one second.
Ken?
It's up to you. It's currently closed, so it's entirely up to you.
I mean, I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna keep going back and forth. I feel like the applicant has agreed and they do believe that, you know, they do want to redesign the project. And we do want a new redesign and we want a, we want a hotel there. That's, I don't think that's.
I think the key thing is, is that we just give them enough that they, they can come back with something that works.
Okay.
And I think we're at a point where we've done that. And if not, they can ask staff and they can, they can contact, you know, we can have another meeting with staff again and give them more detail. But I think that's the, the, the whole thing forward is providing as much detail as we can so that we have one more meeting and that's it.
Wow. Is everyone comfortable with making a motion? How does everyone feel? That we've all addressed everyone's comments? Does anyone else have additional comments?
Can I, can I just say one more thing? I just, I really want to be clear, just so we can make sure that if we do go back, we know what we're doing and can come back for one more meeting only. And I'm still on the horizontal articulation, and what exactly does that mean? Is that horizontal articulation resulting in upper floor setbacks?
Yes, upper floor setbacks.
Okay, thank you.
As, as an option or as, that's what you, that's what?
That's what I would like. It doesn't have to, I, I don't want to be very strict and say, well, the third story has to go with the fourth story, but there does have to be some type.
And, and I'm, I'm, I don't want to speak for Luke here either, but I, I'm, I'm hoping we come that, with the same direction back too. If they come back and say, can we, we couldn't do it horizontally for this reason, but we made this adjustment vertically. If that's not what we're looking for, I, I just don't, I don't want to waste time. I want to be clear with direction. So if there's a way to vertically, if it, if it went from three to four and that satisfied a look, is that going to be a problem? That, that, I just, I just want to make sure we're sending the applicant with some clear direction. And, and we, we're kind of saying, this might be work, this may be work.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to try to make a motion. I think we're at that point. And I've come a long way because I just wanted to deny it, honestly. So, um, I think I would like to make a motion that we, um, that we, that the applicant go back and design this hotel in a way that there is horizontal articulation, vertical articulation. And I don't know that we can put a number on that, but that it's truly visible horizontal and vertical articulation, that the pool is moved to this location or a location that will have involvement with Old Town. I think the yellow is going to be too close to the freeway, so I don't know. I don't know if there's another spot, but somewhere where it is not close to the freeway. And it is also involving Old Town as part of our specific plan. So articulation, horizontal, vertically, and pool having engagement with Old Town. So articulation, horizontal, vertically, and pool having engagement with Old Town. I don't know if you wanna add your balcony?
My balconies?
Yeah, functioning balconies.
Functioning balconies, functioning balconies, functioning balconies, what were you talking about?
That was.
That was it, functioning balconies, anything else?
And, I think that's it.
Anything, Gary?
No.
Okay, all right, that is my motion.
Second.
Okay, so we have a, whoop, we have a motion made by Charlie Trejo, and a second by Watts. All in favor, say aye.
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 All in favor, say no, no, so it's four to one, and we've passed a continuance.
We passed was a redesign, a motion to redesign, yes.
Okay.
Can I say something? That the location of the.
The public hearing is closed.
Hang on, okay, I know, hang on here. Could you, your comments, can you bring that to, to the staff after we're done here?
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on, do we have commission reports? No, do you have anything? No, do you have anything, Gary?
I do not.
You do not? Fernando, do you have any commission report?
I do not.
Okay, I do not, other than, um, I know on when, on Saturday, we do have a event here in town, and all the commissions will be involved, I'll be representing our commission, I'll be there either all day or most of the day, and that should be a good, a good event, so. Subcommittee reports, I know there was a subcommittee, did you, Gary?
We, we, uh, the, uh, I guess it's the Old Town Subcommittee met on the alcohol, um, matter that we had our joint meeting with the city council on. And, um, we were briefed on, uh, by the staff of where they are and how they're coming along, and it should be before the planning commission, um, which would lead to an ordinance, um, sometime in the near future.
June?
That's when it's coming back to the planning commission.
I think it's on the agenda, right, yeah.
And that's about it, there's a lot of details in there, but we're not gonna go into those.
Right, yeah. Any other subcommittee, anything else?
No.
No, okay, so, we are at the Community Development Director's Report.
Yeah, I have a, a couple of really good pieces of news, I want to, um, let you all know that Matt Peters has been named by the city manager to be the acting community development director, and Ron Robert, uh, Ron Roberts, Ron Moreno. Not a council person yet, okay? Ron Moreno has been tapped to become the new public works director upon the retirement of Pat, which is gonna happen July eleventh, so.
Congratulations.
I know that, uh, that both of those departments are gonna be in great hands, um, both of those gentlemen are highly respected members of our team, uh, very knowledgeable, experts in their field, um, and, uh, temecula is going to be served well, the commission is gonna be served well by those two guys, so. Just wanna say congratulations to them and thank you.
Tell us what that means for you though.
Does this mean that we won't be blessed by Ron's presence anymore in the future?
Need to do a lot of hiring, it'll be a while.
So Greg and Pat are gonna be on, uh, Greg's RV, traveling the country together.
Potentially, potentially, they're not, they don't have to share their plans with us, so.
Okay, Ron?
Oh, oh, one more thing, one more thing.
I had a question for Luke, you didn't answer me, I said, what does that mean for you?
Um, I'm gonna be moving upstairs, um, into the city manager's office, um, no change in my title, but, um, it's kind of a functional move. Matt will be the director, so he'll be the director of the department, uh, I'll be involved with both those guys in the departments, as it is my responsibility to oversee both those departments now and into the future. Uh, my, uh, role at the planning commission level will, uh, change a little bit over time, uh, there's a number of different things that are kind of on the docket moving forward that I need to be, continue to be involved in until they come to an end, but over time, you know, um, Matt will take over and, um, and do a great job, so.
Will you miss us?
Absolutely, I love staying till nine thirty at night on Wednesdays. Uh, another thing too, uh, just to confirm, um, we have tickets for all you all for the State of the City, which is coming up, May thirtieth, there we go, I should have that memorized by now, yeah, May thirtieth, so we'll hope to see you all there.
Ron?
So one item I just wanna make sure everyone's aware of is that we have a large sinkhole that developed on Yonex from Pabba South to Halcon, and so crews have been repairing that, but in order to get that done as quickly as possible, we're gonna allow, uh, the construction or the contractor to work all weekend, and hopefully pave it by Monday to get it open for traffic. So, if anybody asks, yeah, we're gonna allow the weekend work, but it's a short-term pain to get the road open as quick as possible.
So what happened there?
It was sinkhole, there was a pipe that ran from, uh, a storm drain that was running from Pabba, Yonex from Pabba, coming down, it goes all the way south and to an outlet. But, um, interestingly enough, it was CMP, even though going back to County Asbills, it was supposed to be a concrete pipe, and for some reason during construction in the county days, they switched out from concrete to a CMP pipe, so it was a steel pipe and the bottom of it was just gone, just completely rusted away. So it, it just created a huge sinkhole, so we've had to shut down the number two lane, we have barricades out, but it, it's gonna be all weekend work.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. So we will adjourn to June fifth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, thank you for sticking it out.
That's our biggest crowd ever.
Yeah.